Megan, you have 6:30. Yes, okay. We'll call this meeting to order for USD 348, Board of Education. This time, we'll ask you to rise to recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. In approving our agenda, we have a couple of amendments. So I move we approve the agenda with the following amendments. Amendment number one, under F Financial Report, strike the word bid under iPad bid and replace that with the word quote. Then we will be adding item two, which is the Apple Rotation Quote. Each subsequent item will then move down numerically. So Safety and Security will now be number three. City Utilities will now be number four. Bus Disposal will now be item number five. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor of approving the agenda as amended, please say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries seven zero. Organizational items, parent, family, and community engagement opportunities and/or announcements. If anyone has anything, you're welcome to principals, welcome to come up to share.
Camera, like, is the filter on that slips me down? No, I, we just, obviously, we're in the midst of February where we have a plethora of athletic events. And I just want to note over the past weekend, well, obviously, now we have the opportunity to watch our kids at state, but we had 10 of 14 girls wrestlers that qualified for state and then nine out of 14 in boys. So that's Wednesday will be girls wrestling and Friday will be boys. And then, obviously, then we go into substate basketball. So just opportunities, right? A lot of it's online, but ability to watch our student athletes compete at state level.
Are there community send-off times posted anywhere yet?
I don't know that there are. We, I know, well, we've advertised, I don't know how much interest we'll have on Spirit Buses, both Wednesday and Friday. It's kind of, it wasn't ideal, obviously, because we had no school today and then we're asking them to bring, but we'll, we'll be flexible. If they want a seat on Wednesday and they don't have their 11 bucks, we'll figure it out, so, yeah. But I don't know on that, I can get you an answer.
Okay, I'm sure we'll find it. I just didn't know if it was out there yet. Thank you. Anybody else?
Let's give a share a little bit about our turnaround roundup. Looking a little bit different this year, and I don't know that I'll get dates, times, correct up by memory, but last year when they did it, they had like four days that they had for ready to come in and sign up for slots. The preschool team had asked me this year if for our current students that are in our preschool program during their kindergarten transition day, if they could come in and do their observations that day and then just have a parent night and like an informational night. So we're going to do that, that way, and then on April 17th, we'll do like a community base. So I'll get information out going to that and then we'll do the parent meeting with that as well as the rotations that they go through and do a half day instead of doing four days. So just a little bit of a change on how that's coming, but.
Awesome.
That information will be put out, I'm going to send it to the bank and then put it on the bulletin board over by the library. If you guys have suggestions of other places to send it, we're going to try to get that out.
The newspaper.
Okay, that's a good one, too.
Seeing that, there's a USD 340 section devoted.
Perfect, that's a great idea.
Yeah.
So anyhow, just getting that stuff out, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Couple of announcements, I did want to make sure and make note, the Kansas Music Educators Association recently. Okay, I can share. They recently, the KMEA recently announced their Hall of Fame class for this year and Will Cooper, who is a retired music teacher, was designated for the KMEA Hall of Fame, which is just a huge deal. So major congratulations to him as a retired educator of Baldwin. And I also wanted to make note, I feel terrible about this. I kind of pop in and out of social media, to be honest, at certain phases of my life. And I was about two weeks in seeing this, so I wanted to make sure you all saw it. Matt McKeon's Studio 110 class in the month of January, which I admittedly did not see until sometime in February, made a beautiful thank you school board video. And so if that got, it's worth going back and take, taking a look, teachers and kids.
Where was it?
It was posted through the district.
On our Facebook page on January 30th.
Which is why I couldn't believe that I missed it because it's on our, and I'm on there all the time. I don't know why I missed it.
Okay, I didn't see it.
So I want to make sure you guys knew about it so you could check it out because they did really good work and it's also very sweet, so, anyway. All right, that's all I have. Anybody else? Okay. Consent agenda, is there a motion for approval?
So.
Second.
Susan moved, Chris seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Recognitions, all right. We have a few tonight, but we're really thankful when we get to present to someone who's, who's able to join us in person. Our first one is for, and Mr. Bland, do you want to come up on this too, since this is from the junior high? So we awarded the Intermediate Center Spelling Bee Champ last month, and that was McKenna Izing, and we have an updated certificate for her that I'm going to, I still said 2022, but this is 2023 now. But tonight, we get to recognize the junior high spelling bee champion. And to join us tonight, we have Ryder Hoobler. Ryder, if you'd like to come up, we're going to present you, we're going to say some official stuff, we're going to clap for you. But before we do Ryder, do you remember what your winning word was?
Uh, I think it was subsidence or congregation, something like that.
Either are impressive. That's, that's great. Now, have you done spelling bees before?
Yeah, I won when I was in fifth grade.
That's right, yes. You're so much taller. Oh, my gosh, yes. Well, that's great. Well, now, is there a county one that he will go on to?
Well, I think that's the word he just offered to use from the county bee, yes?
Oh, this was the.
This was from our building bee and he just, he just competed at the county bee.
And you just did the county bee as well? Okay, so double bonus. Well, congratulations. All right, that's wonderful. The Baldwin City, I can't spell without, you know, spell check, so, good for you. The Baldwin City Board of Education of USD 348 supports and promotes excellence in all school activities. So on this day, February 20th, 2023, the Board of Education recognizes and congratulates Ryder Hoobler, the 22, 23 Baldwin Junior High School Spelling Bee Champion. Congratulations Ryder, and a round of applause for you. And this is to you for McKenna, if you can pass that along. And the two others we have, or the, yes, the two others we have are not able to be with us tonight, but we will get them their certificate. The first one is Nikki Manbeck. We wanted to recognize her, she was, and Mr. Dodge can certainly, he worked more closely with the situation, so he could speak to it more effectively than I. But Nikki was instrumental in helping to facilitate the mental health outreach programs that we had recently with the special speaker, it was Mark.
Mark Potter.
Potter, Mark Potter. That included a community presentation that was open to everyone on Sunday evening and then the following Monday, presentations for both the junior high and the high school. And so anyway, it was a really special thing. It was nice to have a dedicated speaker for that topic and Nikki was instrumental in, I believe, sponsoring and facilitating.
She, she was able to connect, connect me with, with Coach Potter. She'd known him since from her time from college and it was, it's been amazing, amazing connection there, two, two great, or three great presentations. And the presentation itself, it's, you talk about our, you know, expanding beyond Baldwin and making an impact. That presentation that took place on Monday connected with one of our students who was able to reach out to somebody else who was having an issue, was having some, needing some help and convinced her to reach out to Coach Potter. And that individual from Texas called Coach Potter because of that connection with one of our kids. So it's, it's, it was an impact that went beyond just our community. So it was, for Nikki's help in getting that, that started was, was great and was very appreciated.
So round of applause for Nikki Manbeck, we appreciate it. The next is Maile and Sons Construction. They have reached out, this is a local business that had reached out with a contribution to the district to assist with postage and stamps for property tax letters. That was not solicited just out of them just wanting to pitch in and help. That donation, accompanied with that donation was a really kind letter that was forwarded to all the board members of just, a lot of people just appreciating the work that's done on the behalf of all. So again, you know, anytime we have students going above and beyond, parents, community members, people reaching out, just trying to help and, and be a part of what it means to be Baldwin built, we want to make sure that we are intentional about thanking people for that and for recognizing. So let's give a round of applause for Maile and Sons Construction. All right. At this time, we have the Educational Program Highlight tonight, that's featuring the VHS Core Four Plus. Amanda Lyman is here with us to talk about that. Mr. Brittingham will probably tee that up.
He's going to kick it off.
Got it.
Okay, so we wanted to take the opportunity, this is Amanda Lyman, she did teach chemistry in the building before transitioning into our Core Four Plus, which is one of our positions that's currently funded through Esser Funds, and we know that we have that position at least one more year. I know that we, I think it was Nicole out of your building, no, Dan, you also had a student success teacher, yeah, Jackie Hostetler. Basically the same thing, we just called it Core Four, hence the name, obviously. The primary focus is on the Core Four required KSD requirements. We've had this position, but we've never had it to the extent that we have it now, meaning obviously full-time. When Rob McKin was here and then Frank Purbeck, we, we kind of had some hours here and there, but it wasn't as strategic as it is now, obviously using fast bridge data behind in credits, referrals from Student Support Services as to who we place in this, and it's primarily for, right now, freshmen and sophomore. And I'm going to let her speak to the things that she's done and then obviously she'll share the success that we've had and I think that it speaks for itself. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
So I just, we kind of had to rebrand this a little bit this year. Before, people always came in and they thought it was kind of a homework completion class and while that is a big component of it, a lot of kids thought they were just going to come in and really not do much. And so there is, there was a learning curve for all of us involved, I would say, restructuring the course and getting kids on board. And I was telling Megan earlier, you know, I had a couple of kids the first two days were like, I'm not going to do your assignment, Ms. Lyman, I, my mom's going to call me out of this class, I'll only be in here for a day. And I'm like, okay, well, go ahead and try it for a day and then when your mom calls you out, then no one, neither here nor there. And I follow up, you know, a semester later with this kid at parent teacher conferences, I tell his mom, like, he's doing awesome, I really don't think he'll even need it next year, he's got the tools. And this child looked at me, he was like, Ms. Lyman, me and you, we're lifers. He was like, I'm signing up for Core next semester. And I was like, okay, and the mom just looked at him, she's like, hmm, we've come a far away from wanting to not even be in there, you know, that first day to now she can't get you out. So I think over time, like, I've really developed some good relationships with the kids. But again, I've tried to make it more on study skills and study habits that will blend into their homework completion. So each day of the week, we kind of have a different theme in mind. Mondays and Wednesdays, we focus on English skills. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays, we focus on the different math skills. And then Friday, we kind of wrap up with analyzing data from graphs. So each day of the week, I will present a little mini lesson to hit the different core areas to help students. Here, I just kind of put, like, what are the skills that we really are highlighting and focusing on? So Monday and Wednesday, like I said, are English days. So every Monday, the kids will have some type of reading passage that we go through. And while we do that, we are learning how to paraphrase the text. We are learning how do we use a highlighter when we read, so that way we aren't having to reread things multiple times. And then how do we use those highlights to then maybe answer questions? And so I'm trying to teach them skills that they can use on their homework that will better help them in their classes. Tuesday, we really just focus on our basic math operations. A lot of my kids come in and they really struggle in their math classes and they can do everything on that calculator, but you take that calculator away and their processing speed goes a lot slower. Well, you know, as we move through math in the lessons, if their processing speed is slow, then they really struggle to get through the algebra and the algebra two. So we've really focused on just building up those basic math-backed fluencies. Wednesdays, where we do a lot more writing and working on our grammar rules, we do a lot of peer editing. And we peer edit not only the papers they're writing in their classes, but then we also peer edit other things that have been written by others, so we can learn what do the marks mean, how many errors should I be looking for? Because while these kids can write papers, they are not good at being able to find the mistakes within their own papers. And one of the requirements in sophomore, junior, and senior English is that they edit other children's papers. So I'm trying to make them a better contributing member in their classrooms by teaching them those skills that they can use later on. Thursday is probably their favorite day of the week. It is a math-based day, but instead of using the basic math facts, we really work on different puzzles and how do we lay out patterns, how do we organize things, what's the sequence? So they really enjoy the lessons that are on Thursday, probably the most out of any day of the week. And then, like I said, Friday is graphs, where we try to look at graphs that deal with all the different core areas and just look at what data can we collect from it, what predictions can we make, what can we, conclusions can we draw from it? I also progress monitor my kids in English and math. English, we use their fast bridge scores and any of them that were considered high risk, they get one-on-one progress monitoring for me every week. And so what that looks like is I will sit down and they have a passage they have to read for 60 seconds, I time how many words per minute they get, and then they also move on to comprehension. So we're trying to build that up for kids. And then any of them that are high-risk for math, we're also progress monitoring one-on-one with me each week, too. So that's kind of just the skills that I try to incorporate. A daily, what a day looks like in my classroom if you were to walk in, the first 10 minutes is me presenting a mini lesson. And I think this was probably the hardest part for the kids to get over because they're like, what? I'm not just coming in and working on my homework? I'm like, oh, we'll get to that. But this is where I take the first 10 minutes and I go over those math or English or reading activities with them. And that is what I use for a grade. It's set up as a pass/fail course, but I feel like this is a better communication tool for parents because I will put in there, like, here's what they got on this reading comprehension passage today. And if we do it every Monday, then parents can start to see are their children improving. For the math-backed fluency test, we'll do timed tests. And so in the comments, I will put, here's how many they got right in 60 seconds, here's how many they got right in five minutes, or here's the numbers we worked on multiplying by nines, here was their accuracy. So I also think it's a good communication tool for parents to really see not only the skills we're teaching, but here's how your kid is improving over time and they can look at that. Once they finish the bellwork, then the next 10 to 30 minutes is homework time for the kids. I check Power School every morning before they come in and I put them on sticky notes and as soon as they sit down at their desk, they have a sticky note with any missing assignments or assignments that we have to redo. And I tell kids, they're really good about, Ms. Lyman, I've got all As, Bs, and Cs, I don't have anything missing. Oh, you sweet child, yes you do, I've already checked it. And so it's getting out of that mindset of just like, it's a 70% or higher, it's good enough. Okay, that is good, but we can be great. And so I've clicked on this and here's what you're missing, so here's what we're going to be working on today. And, you know, they do really well with it. I would say their two biggest benefits for me teaching Core Four this year is I am doing every single math assignment, I told Mr. Brittingham after this year, I probably could go take the math certification test as a teacher, because I have done all of the concepts of algebra one, algebra one, concepts of algebra two, and concepts of geometry assignments ahead of the kids. And I have it in a binder, so they know when they walk in, they have to finish their math and then they have to check it with my key. And I tell them, I may have an answer wrong in there, and they're really good, they almost like find it a game, like, huh, let me see if there is one wrong. And I always say, okay, if we disagree, let's throw it up on the board and work it out. So that really helps, I think, has improved their math assignment scores tremendously, not just on completion, but making sure they're doing it right. And by me working through the assignments, I have a much better understanding of what they need to be doing and can help problem solve any troubles that they're having. The other one for English, any papers that they write all get edited by me, so they'll do the rough draft, I will print it out, I will mark that thing up, and then they have to take a highlighter and go through every single fix or correction that I've marked and fix it before they turn it in for a final draft. And I always tell students, by doing this, that is not making it an A paper. I said, all we've done is basically take your rough draft and made it maybe into a CB paper, and then you still have to go through another editing process once or twice before it ever gets to that A mark. And so it's just teaching them that, well, I edited it once, it should be, isn't that good enough? It's like, no, no, that was just one version, we have multiple versions. If they come in and don't have any homework or finish the homework before the end of the hour, I learned real quick that they really like to go to their cell phones at that point and I really despise cell phones in the classroom, to be honest with you. So I took a course, a college course where I made some choice boards and I'll show those next, but basically Mondays and Wednesdays, they pick from the English choice board, Tuesdays and Thursdays, they pick from the math choice board, and Friday is our board game day and socializing and collaborating and learning how to play together. So I'll show you those in a minute. And then end of the hour, we just, any homework folders, we sign off on, we make our seminar passes, if any of them feel like they didn't get done and need to come in and finish it, and then we also send email home to parents at that time. So that's what a typical day looks like for me and Core Four and the students. This right here, it's just a picture, but I just kind of wanted to show you, these are the English anchor activities. Some of them are done on paper, some of them are online, but it's just something that keeps them engaged that's not on their phone. And so they have the daily Wordle, I'm sure you guys have all played it or seen it before, the kids really enjoy that and they try to track and beat each other, like, I got it in three, and then I have to be like, you can't give any hints, let them try on their own. So that one's probably their most popular option, but I've got word searches and crossword puzzles they can work on. We have Scrabble and Text Twist. There's a couple of online games for the children who like to play online games, I'm like, here, Grammar of Doom, try it or proof it online. And then there's Bananagrams or Class Puzzles. So they go through these and I try to update these once a quarter to change it out, so there's always something new for them to do in class. But they know to log on to the Canvas page and click on these and start right away if they get done with their homework. This one's just a math one. Most of the math ones are dealing with math-backed fluency, but we do have a lot of deck of cards and dice math games that they play, so there's Math War that they really like, Shut the Box is very popular in my classroom. So again, it just gives them something that, okay, you're done with your homework, but there can still be learning and it can be fun and social and it does not have to be your cell phone. So they're still engaged with the traits we're trying to enhance in them, I guess. Overall, the biggest successes probably so far, at least the ones that we could put data to, you can see up there, we've increased their cumulative GPA, we have much better attendance rates, and we've decreased the number of office referrals for the kids. So last semester, we had eight sections of Core Four, I taught six of them and then Mr. Ashcraft has two sections. We served 48 students between the two of us last semester. And when we did the math at the end, those 48 students were enrolled in 336 courses total and we had a total of four Fs out of them. And two of them, I would say, really, they were math and probably misplaced from the get-go, we needed to maybe catch it a little sooner. One was history and then one was an elective. So you can see there from the sophomores and juniors that we decreased from the year previous to last fall, they went from having nine Fs, the sophomores, to only having three. And the juniors went from having six Fs among them to only one. And then we also had a really good jump from Ds, where the sophomores had 22 Ds the last school year and then this fall, they only had three total. And they went from 10 to five with my juniors. Now, our freshmen, we didn't get all the data from the middle school from them, but they had zero Fs, none of the freshmen had any Fs in their courses, so the freshmen passed all of their courses last semester. Some progress monitoring data, last semester, I had one junior that I was doing one-on-one weekly with, six sophomores and five freshmen. All 12 are now on target for auto reading, they were either considered high-risk or some risk from their first set of data and by the winter testing, all of them were on target. Five out of 12 made it on target for A reading. And where that number is a little misleading is the others made progress, but they may have only went from high-risk now to some risk. But the five of them are now on level, so we're still working on seven of them to get them to grade level where they need to be. And in terms of math, I think our biggest bang for our buck where we see our Tuesday, Thursday lessons pay off is that they average, the Core Four students averaged a 19-point increase on their CB and math scores total. Now, some kids had much bigger increases and had some had smaller, but our average came out to be 19. So we're doing a lot of good things with those mini lessons and getting beyond just coming in to complete homework with this course. I told Brandt, though, that I feel like a lot of what I do during the day, though, can't be quantified and I struggle with that as a math science person, I know everybody wants data, you need. I know everybody wants data. You need to prove it. But there is just a lot of social-emotional learning that occurs in my classroom. And so these are some of the outcomes I just felt were really important that I wanted to highlight that go beyond being able to put a set number to it for the kids. Because not only are the kids completing assignments, so homework completion is obviously going much better. But it's getting these students to, A, want to finish their homework, and two, to check it. So it's not just, okay, I did it, but you did it and got a D. Now they're doing it and they're getting As and Bs on it because they're checking it and taking more pride in their work. I am really big on having the kids communicate with teachers. So sometimes I will be the bridge and other times I'm like, nope, you're going to reach out. And a lot of them are like, I'm not going to them in person. I'm like, great, let's start with our email. We have our iPads right here. So we work on how do we send emails to teachers? How should we word it? What should we say? Did we use punctuation and capitalization in there? Because it is an email. But really teaching them just how to self-advocate for themselves. And then on the right side, I would say the biggest one I think that I've heard parents from is they are really loving the communication between parents, students and teachers. I email a ton. And I tell parents, like, I'm really sorry to get this email because it's like, here's what I got done and here's what I need you to do tonight. And I know that can come off sometimes as like, is she bossing me around? Yes, yes, I did. Like, I did everything I could with your kid today, but at home tonight, he still has homework. It's not just wait till you get to Core Four and we'll finish it in there. But the parents love it. And as a mom of teenagers, I get it every day. I ask my kids, do you have anything? No, Mom, I got it all done. What do I send you to school for? Like, I feel like I never see anything that you've produced or done. Are you sure it's everything done? And so these parents are getting the same responses that my own kids give me. But then when I email it, and I always put this student on it, too, they know they can't go home and say, hey, Mom, Dad, I don't have anything. Because Ms. Lyman has actually said you have a history project and XYZ needs to get done. And so having that improved communication has been awesome, not just for the parent and student relationship, but parent and teacher relationship as well. So those are just some of the things I think that are benefits of having Core Four. And to wrap this up, I don't know. This is where I get a little emotional. I'm not gonna lie. When I first saw this was opened, I told Brian, I said, can I be considered for it? And he literally told me, no. And I was like, okay, well, thank you for that. You didn't even like consider it. And so I came back a few weeks later and I was like, no, I really, I really think that, like, I would be good at this job. I really think you need to give me a shot. And he was like, I don't know, we'll see, maybe. And so then I was like, Brian, I'm telling you, if you make me teach six sections of chemistry, I'm leaving. Like, I'm going part-time. I will go somewhere. I can't do it. And he was like, fine, what if I just do one or two? Will that appease you? And I'm like, all right, that's a stepping stone. I'll sign on to that. You know, and I said, and over summer, we kept in contact. And I'm like, can you find my replacement? He's like, I'm trying, I'm trying. And it all works out. And I got this opportunity. And I mean, I've already told him, like, I love what I do every day. When I say it's personal, like, my kids' successes are my successes, but so are their failures. So it's never just them failing anymore because we have failed together and we have to figure out how to fix it together. And sometimes we refer to these kids at risk. And I really struggle with that. I mean, I get it. I know what we're trying to say. But the only thing I feel like my students are at risk of is not reaching their full potential because they just haven't learned that there are tools and resources and help for them. And when they let me in, they start to have a success here and there. And by the end, they're like, Ms. Lyman, we did it. And I'm always like, nope, you did it. We may have done it at the beginning, but by the end of the semester, it is not me anymore. It is you that did it. And I wear a lot of hats every day. I tell the kids, I said, I'm a teacher for like that first 10 minutes. But then I become a tutor. My favorite one is to be a helicopter mom. And I even tell the moms at parent teacher conferences, I'm like, I am you during the day. So when you can't be here to put your thumb on them and sit down beside them and make them do what they don't want to do, I am your fill-in. I will pull up that chair and I will get out that book and I will read it out loud until your pencil is writing and I can walk away. And if I look back and they're not doing it, I'm going to come sit right back down by you. And the kids will even tell you that. They're like, sometimes, Mom, you're meaner than my, or Ms. Lyman, you're meaner than my own mom. And I'm like, I'm okay with that. I really am. So go appreciate your mom and tell her how much you love her. So, you know, I'm a peer editor. I'm a facilitator. I'm a communicator. But most importantly, what I tell the students is I am you. I am a student. I'm learning right beside you. I'm making mistakes. I'm learning. But we're doing it together. And that's all you need to know, is that you're not alone and you can be successful. You just needed a little push and to believe in yourself. And when they have that, their successes come. And just the joy that they finally have when they're like, oh, my gosh, I'm not failing everything or I'm not just a DF kid. I'm like, no, you are an ABC kid. You get what you put in. And just having that success has, has made me realize how much I love this job and that I am in the right spot. So yes, I may have taught chemistry for 16 years, but the next 16, I know where I'm meant to be. And that's right here is the Core Four teaser. So thank you for your time tonight. I think, Brian, actually, you're wrapping up.
Does anybody have any questions?
I'm just so impressed. I just love it. Just for how we get that to every single kid.
Right.
You are making it the mastery, which is just a basically in all of our case, confidence, success. And that, that turns into motivation.
I know. I think Karen said it best. He's like, it's not figuring out how do we keep you, Ms. Lyman. It's figuring out how do we get you out of your closet so that you have a room with 25 desks and not eight.
Yeah, stop while I'll show you the room that she's currently in. Although I call it the penthouse because you have the best window.
Okay. There you go.
I was gonna ask too, what the baseline data was for the beginning of the year, like the attendance officer. Is that also the last thing you're before?
We have, I mean, we have, yeah, it would have been year previous.
Okay. Well, I knew you said the horse駝駝, so we all agree.
Yeah. And he was gonna run attendance on someone. And like I said, we still have room for improvement there. But I can tell you, I make parents uncomfortable because when their kids are gone a lot. Like, I send emails and even Brian's like, I can't believe you just sent that. And I was like, well, there wasn't anything in there untrue. And he was like, oh, no, but sometimes you're math-science mind, Amanda. Because I'm like, your kid has missed 22 days this semester and I calculated it and that's at 38%. So like, I'm one that puts those numbers out. And it does. It makes parents uncomfortable. But I also hold up like, I just want to know, like, how can I help you at home? Like, what can we do? How can we communicate between us? Because if your kid's gonna be at home, then we still gotta get work. So I-
It's so important to create that with parents. But I also believe that you are making kids have a reason to want to listen.
Yes, I may do think that's-
It's about making sure they know they're missed when they're not at school. And of course, you know, we have to communicate with parents, too.
Right.
They can possibly do that.
The last two things I would say is we, we have a certain population, about, I would say roughly 10% that are on IEPs, 504s. And then I look at it like this. Then we have another 10% for whatever term we want to use, fell through the cracks. Maybe they don't qualify for whatever reason. So now I have, in my eyes, and our I specialized instruction for another 10%. So now we're attacking 20% of our student population with what I would almost call like 2.5, you know, like tier 2.5. I mean, small group setting, but it is more explicit in what she's trying to do. And I think really, when we'll really start to see the fruits of what she's doing is when the graduation rate starts to increase. Because now she's, obviously, we won't see that now with some of the freshmen and sophomores until they're seniors and they graduate and they go on to do things. So, but as that number starts to increase. If you ever have any questions, certainly you can reach out. I can get you any answers. She, like she did say, it is evolving as we start to try to pull more data and then I did better identify kids that need that extra support. And we do have some, unfortunately, that refuse. We make a recommendation and parents may not want it because possible stigma. But I think she does a good job of trying to mitigate or erase that, so. Okay?
This is, this is a place of, uh, to class.
Yes.
It's gratifying to see that it's paying off for me. You can decide on classes.
I just wanted to point out here that the two of you, in terms of how you've blended this and you've melded this here, you've got the perfect blend of the art and science behind teaching and the relationships that you've established there and made all of the impact as I said here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. So one thing we'll, at the board level, that we'll want to keep an eye on is those data points that have been shared from how the student success teachers or how that's been titled at each building. Those are SRFunded. So if the data is there that those are things that we want to continue, then that has to be reflected somewhere in budget at some point. So that's a, that's a thought for another day, but something that we shouldn't lose track of in terms of our jobs. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Baldwin Built Employee of the Month, Mr. Dodge.
Yes. So last month, Jackie Hostetler was our Employee of the Month. And she stood success over at the primary center. This year, or this month, excuse me, for February, we had to go about things a little bit differently. One, the weather itself played a little bit of impact on our decision day. Two, the individual that was selected was someone that we knew that had, they known ahead of time that, and when we typically make our call, that they would have rejected, said no. And so, so some of that, it played well that this individual was not in the district. They were, they were in Colorado when we were able to make all this happen because it was at a point of no return, they have to accept. So at this time, I will share some information. Tonight's winner is in a new role for the district. I've been at serve the district at the intermediate center for many years, providing a positive environment for our students, families and coworkers. Our winner has, again, excelled in their current role at the district office and does not shy away from offering assistance to other departments or staff. Our winner regularly goes above and beyond to help others. Even when the timelines are short, she always responds positively with grace and compassion. The individual who provided this nomination had the following to say. I am provided to have her be a part of USD 348, our community and the district office. So at this time, will you please help me welcome our February Employee of the Month, Michelle Patterson.
Excuse me, it's higher. I just got back from Colorado. I'm not traveling today, so.
So there you go.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. You bet.
This was a huge surprise, but very honorable. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Also from the Baldwin Education Foundation. They co-sponsored this. And so I just want to say, Michelle and I have known each other for 17 years. We raise kids together. We've worked together in lots of different ways. She's a silent servant. She's a humble servant. And I'm so happy that you are out of the office so that they can make this happen.
He's right. You'd have been there. You'd have said, oh, no, 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 no.
When I called her, she says, no, no, you're not. I said, it's too late.
It's already hard. Oh, no, no. So PR's so right.
All right. We have no celebrating, pre-48 voices, but we have one public comment. I bet it's Mr. Snyder. And public comment is an opportunity for the board to listen. In accordance to district policy, BCBI, this is the agenda time during the meeting. When an individual may address the board, the board welcomes up to 10 patrons. Each patron can speak for three minutes. Those wishing to make public comment, ask to sign up prior to 7:00. With the exception of not discussing specific matters related to identifying students or staff by name. Due to confidentiality considerations, there are no restrictions regarding the subject matter the patron wishes to share with the board. And the next part is irrelevant because there's no delegation of persons. Board members are not to respond during this time. Again, this is the time established in the meeting for board members to prioritize listening to the public. Mr. Snyder with the topic of bond issue.
Good evening. I just wanted to touch on a couple of things that were abrupt from the previous meeting on the 6th for the special meeting related to the bond issue. Like, there's some, we're in general just missing some information. I hope maybe tonight it'll be addressed later on in the agenda. But if not, in the future meetings. Specifically related to the athletic complex. I guess there's a lot of uncertainty as to whether this new complex will have additional maintenance costs that'll impact the budget. I know I realized that I will be saving $35,000 a year, I believe it was, on lease to Baker. But, for example, if we have to hire another staff person to maintain the facility, that will increase costs beyond any of the savings. Also want to speak to on the CTE wing. We budgeted, it was $5.5 million for that. But even as of that meeting on the 6th, there still wasn't a clear idea of what programs were to go into which rooms. And I have a difficulty understanding how you can design a space to fit a need if you don't know what that need's exactly going to be. I saw so generic spaces, but that doesn't make sense because all of a sudden, you're going to be in that building. You're trying to cram a need into a specific space, which really isn't better than what we have already. And it was also a recommendation. I spoke with State Rep. Carrie Barth and she had a conversation with Wichita School District. And that was a recommendation, too, especially when you're talking about something like for a culinary program that has very specific needs as far as ventilation, electrical, especially to get rid of gas stoves. We'll see about that. But, so anyways, I just, I feel like we're, we're getting a little bit ahead of ourselves as far as what I've seen. And maybe that information there just hasn't been presented publicly. And then also, I wanted to talk about on the Core 3+ the options that were listed were, you know, as quote, potential other improvements. And I guess I'd like to see some more detail exactly what that would be before it's presented to, you know, to taxpayers as to what that's going to be. It's $5.2 million. And I worry that, you know, it could be misconstrued as just a blank check for, for whatever.[1546.22] wait for parents to pick them up. So I guess ultimately I'm trying to say is that, you know, with three months before the vote, I feel like there's a lot of details that are missing, and I hope they're going to be addressed. I'm worried that, I feel like there's more sloganeering and sales pitch as opposed to just, oh, that's it? Okay, all right, well, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving on to financial report. For the iPad quote.
Okay, so yeah, first up is the iPad quote. The prices, the iPads and cases are the same as last year. The cases are a little nicer. They have a track pad this year. Probably they'll charge us more for them next year, but they're the same as the previous case at this point. It is a smaller class, so the number is smaller. I also didn't pad it quite as much as I sometimes would for extras because we're kind of, you know, as you know, cutting back a little bit where we can this year. So that makes the bid about $7,000 less than it was last year. We have this budget at a $50,000 in capital L.A., and really with the class size changes from year to year, I probably wouldn't adjust that a lot. But this year, that came in at $40,591.85. Any questions on the, this is for the freshman, 2023 freshman?
Very minor detail. I see.
No, there are only blue cases. Yeah. Yeah, that's, well, I'm sure I could maybe find a gray case of some sort, but these particular cases that we, the Logitech ones, are, the blue's the only choice. There was, last year, we had, the IMAX came in colors, but we had to upgrade to quite a bit more expensive IMAX to get the purple. So I did not upgrade it to get the cool color. But no, we only get blue, blue cases. Any other questions?
Is that, okay, I just want to make sure.
And again, this is, Apple is a one-source vendor, so these don't really go out for bid per se. We just do get quotes, and we do get an education discount.
All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand. Aye. Motion carries 7-0. Item two, the Apple Rotation Quote.
So the Apple Rotation Quote, let me get back up to the top of the page here. This is for, primarily for staff computers is the bulk of this. We're replacing high school and the intermediate center and the primary center, mostly teacher and some staff. There's a few, like the offices are on a different rotation, administrators are on a different year. But somehow, somewhere along in the years, we ended up with three schools, actually the junior high will also do Chromebooks later, but we ended up with all the staff at once, so that takes up the bulk. The only other thing that are on it this year is a one laptop lab at the high school. I looked back, these same computers four years ago were more expensive. So four years ago, we spent $965 per laptop for staff. And these are, the majority of them are the 879. I did identify a few groups of staff members who have very little, very minor storage needs, and I downgraded them to one with less storage. We do have more staff members, about 10 more than we did 10 years, about four years ago. A lot of those are the extra funded staff positions, so. So for the staff computers and the high school laptop lab, that total is $114,665. Any questions about that? There are some extra computers worked in there. We started a few years ago. We no longer purchase Apple Care, which is kind of an extended warranty kind of thing, and so we'll order a few extra computers whenever we order computers. And also because we're, you know, future growth, we may need a few there. So there are a few extras in that rotation. And again, this is a quote from Apple. We don't really send them out for bids. In the past, they always, we used them for quite a few more years in a laptop lab, but because we're one-to-one as a district now, that won't be happening. So we have this last, we haven't gotten, hasn't come to fulfillment, but we have a new e-cycling company, and they have offered to work on buyback with our staff. And so we will be trialing that this year with the, a couple desktop labs that we thought people might want to purchase back. Because again, with the desktop labs, those have always been moved into a library or something, and now we're not doing that. So they're in better shape than they used to be. And as a district, the buyback handling it ourselves would be a lot. It'd be a lot of transactions, a lot of working on, you know, cleaning off computers. And we found a place in Kansas City that's offered to do that with us. But again, we're kind of in trials on that, so maybe that's what happens to them, but I, until I've had that experience, I'm not sure. We will keep, we'll retain some of them. We will use them again for, you know, replacements, for, oh, student teachers, for, you know, when we suddenly have extra staff that we didn't, in two or three years, that we didn't quite buy enough computers for. So we'll, we wouldn't get rid of all of them, but, so. I'm not exactly, I'm not 100% sure that right now what's going to happen to them, so that's where that is. This is the first year they haven't, I haven't had a, you know, moves into the elementary school laptop labs.
I'm sure you've discussed it, that the opportunity for seniors to purchase or graduate seniors.
They've had that option with their iPads.
Yeah, that's one we have.
This is, again, this is the first year we've had anything of any value, to tell you the truth, because typically we have used our devices, you know, eight to 10 years. So I suppose that might be a possibility, and it might be something we can work with this company with as well. Again, I kind of, they have picked up the stuff in the past month, but I haven't heard back from them, and they haven't sent me the link to see how all the purchasing, they couldn't give me a lot of details beforehand because they have to grade everything. But it's possible that this would be something that we could make available to students as well as staff. I don't really know at this point, so. I will say these particular staff laptops are, the batteries have not been great. Every time, once in a while, you just get a batch of computers that are all about the same age, and they all have a similar problem, and I've not had this many bad batteries before the four years was up ever, so, yeah, there's that. So the amount was, it's an even number because the, no laptop cases there, iPad cases that came out at $0.99. $114,665 for the staff laptops, and then the, this is the laptop lab at the high school, and it's on a six-year rotation. So those laptops are six years old. This is all part of the $140,000 capital L.A. line. There'll be some other things that funnel into it as well that aren't Apple.
I would be accepting the Apple Rotation Quote for $114,665.
Chris moved, and Tony seconded. All those in favor of accepting the Apple Rotation bid for $114,665, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Kay.
I'm still up here.
Yes.
Now I'm talking safety and security.
Item three.
Item three. So this one has been a challenge. So we did give four responses to our safety and security bid. Two of them came in past the deadline, and we couldn't accept. One had a, the bid specified no partial payments, and it required a down payment. The bid, after it was amended, had two sections, and the fourth bid, we got only bid on one of the sections. And this one, I actually reached out to a KASB attorney to get clarification on whether you could accept a partial bid. And he did recommend that you not accept a partial bid because someone else might say, "I didn't know I could make a partial bid." So my recommendation tonight would be to reject all our safety and security bids.
And we need to do that with a formal motion, right? Yeah. I thought so. I just wanted to check. And then you have to start all over.
Yes, I do kind of have to start all over. So we, in addition to this part not going real well, I put the bid out originally with three parts, which included our, had the prop door alarms, some electronics locks, access control, and some additional security cameras. And discovered not long after it went out that our access controller no longer, we're no longer be able to get parts for it, so we're going to have to look at a new access controller. So I actually amended the bid early on to take out that metal section with the access control. So starting all over and looking for a new access controller.
Well, with the acknowledgement that, you know, failure is only a path to success, I move that we reject all of the bids, safety and security bids.
Again.
All those in favor, please say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
All right. Thus rejected. Thank you, Kay.
Thank you.
All right. City Utilities, item number four. Nate's going to talk to us about that.
We were reached out to by Casey Sonno with an opportunity in terms of how they were developing their budget for the year, and so Nate can show us some information for that.
Yeah, well, with that approach, basically the opportunity to look at a possible deferment on our electrical bill for 12 months. So that's an estimate, you know, for six months, about $108,000 that we could potentially defer. We do have the option to do a repay as we wish up through the end of December of this year, which at that time, if any remaining balance, would be spread over 24 months at zero interest. This is just an opportunity that was presented to Mark and definitely wanted to bring to the board for your consideration, and, you know, it's an opportunity.
And so for them, they're, they budgeted for it, so they're, it's within their process to go ahead and defer for us. It's just a matter of when do we, do we want to go ahead and withhold those payments as they've offered, or to continue making payments.
Can you go over that term over the year?
Yeah, so the deferment would be for 12 months, so basically this whole fiscal year, or whole calendar year, excuse me. So we would, we can pay none, all, little portion, all the way through at the end of this year. So let's say there's $100,000 left on December 31st, they would spread that over 24 months with zero interest. This just allows us to look at the budget at the end of this fiscal year to see where we're going to be at. It gives us the opportunity, a little cushion, so. That kind of is our answer.
Before we decide what, if anything, we want to do, we also, we've thanked on behalf of the board, the city council for voting to do that. Lynn's here tonight as well, so you can, if they're not sitting at home watching the video with Bade and Brad, you can pass it on to, we really appreciate the willingness to do that. We did not ask for that. They offered it. They know we're in a cash situation because of this BOTA ruling. Let's just, I'm not going to dance around it. It is what it is. And because of that, we wiped out our contingency fund so that we can be solvent in all the ways that we need to for keeping people on staff and getting through this fiscal year. So as we talk about this, we also want to distinguish between our fiscal year and calendar year because there's tracking of both. But in any case, very much appreciate the gesture because it was offered so that we can have some options for holding on to some cash. We're still going to owe what we're going to owe, but with zero interest or late fees in that respect. So it was very, very kind and community spirited. So regardless of what we choose to do with that, definitely want to extend our gratitude for that. So with that, what do you guys think? Girl backs.
Well, I mean, now, there's, you know, you look at it from Robin Peter Pay Paul, and when Mark presented to me, it took me, it took me a little bit just to really process. I think it's a good opportunity. When I let it kind of sink in, it doesn't say that we take that money and do something else with it, but it gives us that cushion, that opportunity to really pat ourselves, I guess you could say. So to answer your question, I think it's a good idea. Again, we can still, after the end of the fiscal year, really know where we're going to be, and we can start chopping at that if we, and I think we probably should, to be honest with you, but I want to, I want to play that out.
Can I ask for clarity on fiscal year versus calendar year? Is it a version of calendar year?
The opportunity for deferment, for payments would be calendar year. So we would, we would have the opportunity to not pay Januaries, Februaries through end of December. Okay? Go ahead.
Going retroactively concerning we've not paid Januaries earlier?
We have, I pay, I did pay the January bill, just because of time of due. Yes, yes. Yeah.
For me, I have a one bet, like I don't want to be in that. Like, I mean, and I think it's wonderful for the city's willing to do that. I would almost want to treat it like it's an emergency, an emergency relief valve if we needed it. If something came up, we get to say, "Hey, look, you know, we're not going to, we can't make it for the month of July, so we're not going to pay July's, but then as soon as we can, pay it." Rather than just take money out of the city's coffers to pat our coffers because of their generosity. I don't like the idea of, except Robin Peter Pay Paul kind of thing, where we're taking the generosity from them and just lining our, lining the school, you know, giving us a buffer. I'd rather, I'd rather pay them and then realize that we have a little bit of a buffer there that if we need to, we can have that a little bit of relief valve.
Yeah, and I think that was kind of the initial conversation Mark and I had was to, you know, get us through this initial end of the fiscal year, gauge it month by month. Just because the opportunity is fully there does, to your point, we don't have to, you know, to take the full, the full card.
One of the thoughts that we're going to do is go ahead and exercise it and hold the payments, and if we don't have an emergency we weren't expecting, then just rather than defer and paying out 0% for two years, if you was right, and we'll check at the end of the, you know, at the end of the period if we got through it. Because once we get into payment mode, it's not going to help us further. Unless we have an emergency we weren't expecting.
Well, our new fiscal year kicks over July 1.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm not, I'm grateful, but I'm not interested in any 24-month version of anything. It is nice in the short term. We've had two vehicles break down the last week. It's nice to know that if we need some cash somewhere.
Yes.
That that's available to us. But to me, I personally would only see that as a stopgap to get through the rest of this fiscal year personally, but.
Budget accordingly.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
But that needs, again, everybody needs to weigh in on, they may have a different idea of what may make more sense.
And on June, I mean, June 30-ish, we can sweep money around to get it right.
Really throughout June, yeah. Yeah, we'll have to close down the, or close the year.
We could in theory sweep some of that to this type of fund for, I mean, there's always some, we could in theory adjust that in a more than we typically would in June and October. You know, skin off the speed.
Yeah. Yeah, and we definitely could do that. To take to Kelly's point too, I mean, you're, you're trying to see what happens within this fiscal year. However, does that, would it really truly affect your budgeting process for the next fiscal year? Sure it would, you know? So again, to your point, is that, yes, I mean, there's, it's an opportunity. I'll just leave it at that, so.
My thoughts on this, what I've told Nate is if we did anything, I'd want to do just to the point where it got us through the balance of this fiscal year, which would be the month of June. And if we did defer, payback as immediately as possible, if that language is correct, as soon as possible. I don't like the adding to debt in that itself. Beginning in March is, and I'll talk a little bit about this in my superintendent's report, beginning in March is when we're supposed to start getting some information regarding, it'll start allowing us to start processing the repayment piece that's required within BOTA. And so at that point is when we're really going to have an idea of what impact this is going to have there. So this, this does provide that cushion per month as needed. So I mean, the city's already budgeted for that part of it, but we can start paying immediately if we want. So to continue to pay until we need to use it as a safety valve, I think is a viable option.
Everyone.
I'm fine with that. I'm not sure what it looks like on our end. You thought that through, what do we have to do? Do we just say we trust your judgment, we're done, or do we make a motion?
I don't think.
It doesn't require.
It doesn't require a motion. I just think they want, they were looking for some direction from us to report to us what our options were, and then if we have, you know, some vastly different idea of how that should look compared to what they were thinking, that was that opportunity.
Yeah, exactly.
So we're going to, to be clear, we're going to, we're going to pay. And then if we, when we know more in March and something changes, we can revisit. We need to, you know, we're not just going to assume.
Correct.
A 24-month deferment as a standard operating mode.
12 months of 24 payback.
Sorry, yes. Yes. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Bus disposal.
Okay, so we have our 110 bus. It's one of our two older buses. This particular vehicle's been in Topeka for service for the last 18, 19 months, so really hasn't been in our fleet at all. The reason for that was just supply chain issues for repairs, or, excuse me, for parts. Good news is the part came in, and so now we spent $2,400, drove it off the lot, the brake lines, I think master cylinder or something happened with the brake fluid, or it broke, took it right back. So now we're looking at another $4,500. So Al's opinion, our mechanic, is, and I agree with him, it's, it was going to be in the rotation for disposal party in the next two, three years anyways. Do we keep throwing money at the bus, or do we dispose? So our recommendation this evening is to go ahead and move forward with the disposal, unless you feel otherwise.
We've talked about it. Yeah, we've talked about it.
He's got very little wear and tear.
Yeah, yeah.
The mobile version. The mobile version of the movie Muddy Pit.
Yeah, never an easy decision. We had a local scrapyard. We visited kind of back and forth with them because we could rob parts potentially. But it did come in at a lower purchase price, which was that $600 that we, that I even mentioned to you earlier. But there is another one in Topeka that would pay a little higher premium. Both come up with options. The local vendor would be able to pick up the bus, we'd be done. The Topeka one, we'd have to flip it down the street. So, and Al's pretty confident that he can do that because his safety is my concern too. So I don't want to make sure that he's just not hopping into it and taking that risk. And that, that came in about, estimated about $1,100. So. Yeah, so it's, it's, or I guess let me jump to our recently purchased bus. It's been pushed to now October, that we purchased in July. So kind of bad news there. Plus Kelly's mentioned the two other vehicles that, yeah, so. So any other questions on the bus? I did ask Al that. He didn't think we'd get what we have in it, to be honest with you. Because that was one of my first questions is do we, can we fix it and take the risk and putting more money into it? Exactly, exactly. Grin on the back. But, I mean, we could. And I think the conversation Mark and I had too with Al is that, you know, it's 4,500 bucks. It's a risk. So do we, do we have 65, 77,000 into it? And does it fall down in two weeks? I mean, we don't have a crystal ball. So, Al, I'm deferring to Al. He didn't think it was worth it. Because I was on the same line that you were, exactly.
So when you, so you can put it in the rotation with, I mean, I haven't experienced this before, so does that mean you're obviously here, you're talking about selling it, but do we own it outright or?
We do, yeah, no, no, we do. It's free and clear.
So then the money that we get from that goes back into the budget for
Transportation, yeah, yeah, we can put it towards our purchase. It just really comes down to the question is do we, do we roll the dice on the bus? His history with the bus, it's been a money pit. And that was the other factor, exactly, yeah. I mean, it's been tight, yeah. It's been tight, but then, you know.
And getting it back, he would not be putting it in the rotation as a daily driver. It would be backup.
In reverse, yeah.
So do you need a motion for that?
For the disposal, we do. The reason we put it in our consent is just because we wanted to have that initial conversation with you, yeah. It's $500 difference, yeah. Topeka's about $1,100 and then the local was a $600. We could potentially scrap up to a year for our other bus. It's a liked bus. So there is some value, because I did talk to Al with that. He didn't think we'd touch it as much, but you never know. It's, it's done, yeah. So, I mean, we're talking pennies and dollars, I mean, but every penny counts, so. I haven't seen it. It's been in Topeka for the last 18 months. Yeah, our understanding that is that he has a truck.
Plus, I mean, who knows, if he needs parts at least. For that amount of difference, it's not going to be great.
It creates a little safety net. Exactly.
So why in Topeka? Because it's already there?
Partially, but Al had just found another.
Because it's a higher?
It just, he reached out to say, hey, this is what we have. And actually it just came back a little bit higher offer. Plus, yeah, the win that is, it was in Topeka already.
Because it's already in Topeka?
That's correct.
So actually, yeah, okay.
So we have to bring it home to the locals?
Yes.
Well, that is not correct. So he would pick it up from Topeka for us. So that, so there
He's willing to go there and take
My understanding that that is correct. So it's still a one and done for us. That could be why we're getting a little bit lower price too. You know, his time and gas and all that kind of stuff, so.
I'd rather have somebody local than
Exactly.
I mean, as long as it's not our problem either way. I mean, if it was thousands of dollars of difference, that would be different, but it's 500 bucks and
Well, I'm kind of thinking 500 bucks is 500 bucks, but if we would make it back in parks, we could take.
One part, I can imagine that there's a single part on a bus, maybe a rearview mirror, it's not a 500.
And as far as, I'm not sure of that particular bus. You know, some buses have the cameras built in, things like that. I'm sure we would go through and take off. But I could check with Al to confirm that too.
You know, people do fundraisers with like beating the tar out of old vehicles, you know. $20 for each sledgehammer. Be very cathartic. I don't know. I think we're all brainstorming other ideas, which isn't really
So do we need a motion to say where we do it? I'll make a motion. I'd say that we approve the bus disposal for the 500. What was it here in town?
About 600.
$600 disposal for the local.
Phil moved, Chris seconded to go with the $600 local option. And they will take care of transporting the bus. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. That was everybody, wasn't it? Okay, 7-0, motion carries.
Okay, thank you.
All right, before you go for under financial, just so that it's noted, under financial, in our audit last month, we had, that was presented, we've had a very good report as we remember, but like many districts, our food service, because of how funding changed through federal, all of that. That was the one area that was noted that we needed to spend down. And my understanding of reading that was that it needs to happen soon.
Yeah, I visited with Nicole and just because of same concern. You know, we're halfway through the year. What's the plan? I think we technically have until, sorry to interrupt, technically till next, end of next fiscal year is my understanding.
We do, okay, that wasn't my understanding, okay.
And I'll do some clarification on that. What our response back was that we have time. I would still like to see an active plan, just because
That was going to be my request, if you could relay that to food services. I would like to see, not, I don't, we don't need to micromanage or get into the weeds, but I would like to see, to be responsive to our audit, I would like to see a general overview of the game plan to spend down those funds. And I would also, for that to come back to the board.
Good.
And if we have more time, great. I'd love for Nicole and you guys to verify that. My understanding of that was different. I thought we were on a more compressed timeline. And if we're not, that's fine. But even if we're not, I want to see what the game plan is and have that brought back to the board as a whole.
Well, one, I wouldn't say a concern for me is that I don't want to get too, even if we have the room, I don't want to get too far with the next fiscal year where the auditors are going, we're still carrying about.
Absolutely, there's a lot of moving pieces and that was the one, you know, that one area. We're not alone in that. It is a challenging time with monies coming in in very different ways. So no problem, but I also want to know what our plan is to deal with it, so.
Agreed.
And next fiscal year is not all that far away.
No, it's not. So to me, again, that means sooner rather than later. But, yeah, if you could pass that along to Nicole, that we would like to. Personally, I would like to see it in March. I mean, my understanding was that we did not have until another fiscal year, but I'm wrong a million times a day, so that won't be the first or the last time. I'm not saying it has to be March, but I would say March or April would be what I would like to see, unless anybody else has strong feelings in a different direction. Okay, thank you. Thanks for passing that along.
You bet. Thank you.
All right, administrative reports. Approval of out-of-state field trip.
Brent has a teacher wanting to go. Is Brent here? You've got a teacher that's requesting a field trip to the World War Museum.
Yeah, it's just, yes, I know, we've talked about probably changing the policy, getting the radius. Grant McCura wants to go visit, I don't have the exact date in front of me. The World War II Museum, I believe, is at Union Station right now. And technically, obviously, that's the Missouri side. I still think it's a month out, but obviously wanted to get approval so then he can proceed to take freshman-level students to that exhibit.
If it's not the World War I?
It might be. Sorry.
Is it in association with Al's Quiet on the Western Front?
I don't, no, I don't, I do not believe so, so.
It's okay.
I just know it's Union Station and obviously one of the world wars. And supposedly we won those, so.
The special exhibit at Union Station.
Yeah.
I move we approve the out-of-state field trip as presented. Thanks.
Thank you.
All those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries, 7-0. Oh, no, it's totally
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I just see everything that's left and I'm like, okay, let's go. This isn't hard.
You can have a curious question.
No, that's good. That's good, that's good to be inquisitive. Okay, item number two, state of the district with Mr. Dan Ray. Thank you for your patience, Ty. We have a very lofty agenda.
Dan's been making the tour of our co-op or interlocal districts, state special education within the districts. And he asked to have time with you tonight to share his message, so.
I do appreciate your time. I'll start going through this. I know that, I do have a PowerPoint presentation, sorry. Sorry, I have a hard copy. No, I did, I sent it to you, I don't remember how many weeks ago. Sorry about that. I would never mistake you for another man.
You could try, buddy, but it's a little hard with that.
I'll proceed without it, unless you guys need the visual. And if I start to lull you to sleep, somebody just notes the person next to you. But I did want to come before you today just to let you know what, where we're at in terms of special education because I know it's in the heart of the legislative session and it's garnering a lot of attention. And I also know that money is of a particular interest to all of us in terms of savings and in terms of spending. And I know that special education typically gets a bad rap for being very expensive, which it is. However, I know that on the legislative floor this session, we are talking about the governor's proposed budget. And we're talking about how special education has not been funded at the level that the statutory, that the state has passed into legislation as the statutory obligation. That's been the case for 14 years now. The governor's proposal, our proposed budget increases the budget by $72 million to special education, which would bring us up from where we're currently at. And I'll get to that in just a little bit, but I don't think that's got a prayer of getting through in total. However, I don't know, maybe prayer. I did want to explain just a little bit about what we are. We are an interlocal, just so to clarify, we're not a cooperative. We are independent of the three school districts, meaning that we don't have our own HR. We have our own HR department. We can't rely upon one of the three districts for that or for payroll or for anything else. So, but relative to that, we have a very small dedicated staff of three ladies in our office that do a very, very good tidy job, economical job, of making sure that all of those Ts are crossed and Is are dotted. There are 23 cooperatives in the state as opposed to 17 interlocals. Just to give you some perspective, there's 267 districts in the state. 240 of those are served by either interlocals or cooperatives, meaning that only 27 districts have their own independent special education departments. That's done for efficiency and for cost savings, which is why the state board approves or disapproves anyone making changes to that particular arrangement. But I did want to make sure that you guys understood that in terms of the differences. We have a lot of programs that we offer. One of the different, one of the benefits of having an interlocal is that we can offer the programs to all three districts at a savings. We have an autism program, we have our behavior program, Webz, which is located in Udora. The autism program is elementary program, that's also located in Udora. We have our Bridges program for 18 to 21, that's located here in Baldwin. We also do have, we have our gifted education program, which stretches across all three districts. That's going to be undergoing some changes because we've got some retirements this year. And then we also do have a behavior support team that helps to keep our kids, builds capacity within all three districts to keep the kids closest to their home school and their least restrictive environment. I'm not going to bore you with all of our team members. I will tell you that we do have 56 special educators, we have six school psychologists, we've got 3.2 occupational therapists, that's up from the beginning of the year where we started with just points, 1.6, but we have been able to increase that to where we have full staffing now. We also have three quotas to help support those needs, which we've had all year. We have eight speech-language pathologists, we have 112 paraprofessional, 113 as of today, sorry. 113 paraprofessionals, 114 as of next Monday. So we continue to expand that as necessary. We have at our peak had over 130 paraprofessionals. We have found more economical ways, more efficient ways to serve our kids with the staffing shortages that we've seen over the last couple of years. Some of our other initiatives, we do have a strategic plan, it's operationalized as of this fall. And that's on our website, so if you'd like to see in more detail what that all looks like. But we're making great progress toward meeting those initiatives. We have a parent group. Oh, back to the strategic plan. Part of our strategic plan is to improve our IEP writing across all three districts. And we have just completed the second district audit of our individual case managers' files. And we're having individual meetings with that district to make the individual comments that we had on each one of those IEPs. But we're being, we are very encouraged. We started here in Baldwin, we went to Udora. We found areas that we definitely need professional development on. So that's good that we've got some clear targets, but part of that is because we've, we've had to hire more new teachers last year than we really wanted to. And our candidate pool is not as deep as general education. So we've had to do a lot more individual in-service training on that with those individuals this year, which is, has proven to be a rewarding challenge. So I'll just leave that where that is. We have our indicator compliance initiative, which we are, there are 20 indicators that the federal government gives us. We meet all of those. We have met all of those for all seven years that I've been here. And so, so that's a good thing. I will say that 6A and 6B, we have not met on a consistent basis. I'll take that, retract that. 6A and 6B is our early childhood, that's another one of our initiatives. This year, we have finally met 6A and 6B in all three districts. So, so that's, that's a good thing. Okay, on to the money piece of things. I did want to give you guys a little bit of perspective and why we're fighting so hard to have our legislators, which I have met with almost all of our legislators across all three districts, that's senators and representatives. The reason we're pushing so hard for that is because the governor's budget includes $72 million more for special education. That would, that would amount to an increase in our interlocal of about $900,000, which means savings of a little bit more than $300,000 to Baldwin alone. The money, the money that you guys pay in assessments is really, we just look to meet our costs. I have made a commitment to all three superintendents that we're not going to raise assessments by more than 1% to 2% for the next four years. And we can do that based upon the fact that the pandemic provided us with some And we can do that based upon the fact that the pandemic provided us with some unexpected benefits. In fact, in the case of our paraprofessional ranks being down, our expenditure is already being budgeted for, and our expenditures outweighing our revenue expectations for those staff. So, but just to give you that indication, I mean, $300,000, you guys know, would come in handy. And that's why we are, we're very hopeful that even in part, passage of the governor's budget with special education revenue increases is going to make sure that we don't have any assessment increases next year. So we'll see. We'll see what happens. The money, where does that go for us? We're almost 98% staff costs. So it's just paying for salaries and benefits. And the other 2% goes toward materials, equipment, those kinds of things. But for the most part, it's just going to staff. So our budget this next, or this year was about $8.5 million. The assessments comprise about, sorry, exactly. Sorry. PowerPoint, I'm skipping ahead. Well, they comprise about 51% of our budget. I'm sorry, the categorical represents 51% of our budget. The assessments that we get from the districts represents 34%, with the rest of it being made up by federal and Medicaid money. So we have seen a growth in staff, obviously, over the last few years. We've seen a growth in staff salaries over the last few years. So as a result, the expenditures have increased at the rate of about 3.3% over the last 10 years. That's about what our staff salaries have increased, although that's a little bit lower than what the staff salaries have increased. We've been really frugal with certain other areas of our budget so we can keep the money closest to the kids. In fact, in the first year that I was here, we actually gave money back in terms of assessments. Maybe a little bit too much money. We had to make sure that we didn't do that again. But anyway, I just, I can't emphasize enough that any information that you guys have that you can get to our legislators in terms of a need would be greatly appreciated. And I do think that it would benefit all kids, obviously, because the more money that the state provides, the less money the districts have to, and the more money that gets kept closer to all students, not just kids with special needs. Just by numbers, I wanted to let you guys know that Baldwin, when I first started this and I was riding my horse to work, the rate was about one out of every nine kids was on an IEP, or about 10.8%. That's nationwide. The average at Kansas has always been a little bit higher, or whatever reason. Right now, the national percentage has gone up to where we're at, right at 15%. So instead of one out of nine kids, it's now one out of six or seven. And that's pretty significant increase. That's just happened over the course of the last 20 years. Here in Baldwin, the rate is 17.3%. We have 231 kids with disabilities that we serve here. Overall, in ECKCE, we serve 18.5% of all of our member districts' kids. So Baldwin has the lowest percentage, still higher than the average. The Kansas average is already up to 16.4%, and we've seen that rise steadily over the course of the last three years. And how much of that can be pandemic-related, we don't know. I would think that would be attributable to learning loss, not disability. But when we, it means more anxiety around when kids struggle, and that means more assessing, more determination, more eligibility. So they're all kind of connected. The predominant disability for all, across all of our districts is specific learning disability, and that's the one that we're seeing the most of. And then followed by speech, language, and other health impairment, which encompasses ADHD, et cetera. We do have gifted education. That's also a positive. As I mentioned, we are going to be undergoing some change there. In Kansas, we're really under identified. We're one of seven states that identifies kids gifted through our special education process. And for some obvious, some not-so-obvious reasons, it's more difficult to get that qualification. So as a result, we only have 2.12% of our students on gifted IEPs. The state average is 2.16. That's not better. It's the same. Nationally, the estimates are that it should be around 6% to 8%. Not everybody offers gifted education, though, so the state-to-state comparison kind of falls apart at certain places. But I will say that the seven states that it does fall under special education are seven of the eight lowest identified in the nation, so. I won't bore you too much with the different alphabet soup that we use in special education, because that is quite extensive. But suffice it to say that our primary tenet is giving kids a free, appropriate public education or a FAP in the LRE, least restrictive environment. And that's what we're committed to. We're committed to providing the best possible services at the best possible value, to sound like an infomercial, to the districts that we serve. And we are always available for questions or for clarification on anything that you guys might have for us at any point in time. And with that, I'll ask if there are any questions.
Anybody have questions?
Well, it's been the strategic plan process has been in alignment in both of our entities. So that's been interesting to me to kind of watch how that's working independently, but also in a complimentary way, which is, you know, what we hope for.
Yeah, we do share some common goals, especially in the terms of meeting our social, emotional needs for our kids. And that's a huge push for us, so.
Does anybody else have questions? Comments?
If you ever do, you know where to find me.
Thank you, Dan.
Thank you, guys.
All right.
Back in December, right before break, Brant and Derek, with the work of their guidance team, put together a survey to solicit student interest in the various pathways that are out there. And through the course of the wizardry that is Drew Izing, they were able to come back with some really cool data. Brant has decided to go in and make an update, so that he is the last reviewer on the spreadsheet. But now they've got some really good information gathered based on the feedback of our students. And the information that they've got here can help us as we vision what CTE looks like for the next several years.
I got to thank Dan. Thank you for going prior to Derek and I. I think I can top you. I did find myself snoozing back there. No, I'm kidding. Sorry. I don't want to, really, I don't want to be long-winded, but I think it's probably appropriate, in the midst of the possible bond that would pass all the additional CTE space, to at least inform you all of what the data revealed and kind of what, then what we would be responsible for doing kind of behind the scenes and give you some different possible scenarios. Okay? So that would be the goal. So obviously, I want to talk about where we're at and then what the vision is for the future. Okay? First and foremost, you've probably seen this. These next three slides is how KSTE has basically structured CTE in Kansas. And so they've divided it into seven different fields. Okay, health, design production, agriculture, business, family consumer sciences, public services, media, and technology. Okay? From there, they added 16 career clusters. Now, I get it, you can't necessarily see what these career clusters are. I did share this with you prior to, so you have the ability to access this if you want to. I'm most versed, obviously. I was a part of, you know, the biology department, science department, so I'm most versed in health and what that entails. So seven career fields, 16 career clusters. And then finally, again, I know that you can't read it, but then they have 36 pathways that are then embedded into those 16 career clusters, which are then embedded into those seven fields. Okay? So that's the structure of the framework for CTE set forth by KSTE. One thing I do want to point out, again, I pulled this from KSTE. In July of 1992, new school financing formula allowed the school districts in Kansas to apply a weighting factor of 0.5 to their full-time equivalency FTE for students that are enrolled in CTE courses at the application and technical level. And then they list the reason for those, special facilities, special equipment, lower pupil-to-teacher ratio, teacher training, and retraining to keep abreast of the specialized subject area. Okay? I always use this as an example. We used to share Tyler Wolf in the business department. This was back when Rob McKinn was principal. He realized that, hey, if we expanded some of our CTE offerings in programming and computer design, then we would probably, and we did have the ability then to offset the cost of some of his salary and then get him to the high school full-time. Okay? So I'll touch base on that a little bit later, but I think it's important to note that we get that additional funding for every student that's enrolled in a CTE course on two different levels. Okay?
So the student brings extra funding into the staffing.
The student enrolled in that course brings in the additional funding. Okay? So basically, these are the 11 pathways that we currently have established in USD 348. What I cut off here is, and you can't necessarily, the shading's not great. These first two rows right here are introductory-level courses. When a kid is enrolled in these courses, they do not receive additional funding. This next set of courses right here in the middle, those are what we would call our technical-level courses. So any course that's enrolled in any of those courses would receive, or we would receive, that additional 1.5 or 0.5 funding. And then finally, these are our application-level courses. And again, they receive the additional funding. Okay? Good? So one of the things that Mr. Dodge tasked us with doing, I would assume probably two months ago, it's been some time. We, and I got to give a shout-out, mainly Cardi Holloway at the junior high. I kind of started a framework for a survey that we could give to students. So this is kind of what it looks like in a nutshell. So the first question, like, students were asked, they were given a little bit of information about careers in agriculture and what that entails. And so they were then asked, are you interested in agriculture, food, and natural resources as a career pathway? If they answered yes, then they were taken to basically a rating scale of the eight pathways that are underneath the agricultural field that was shown in that original sunflower. So just for simplicity, there's eight pathways in agriculture, but only three of them are listed here. But you, just so you can see what the survey looks like, if they answered yes, then they went to the next section, agribusiness systems. We listed some of the possible careers that are specific to that, farmer, rancher, livestock seller, so forth. And then they rated it 1 through 5. Okay? Good so far in kind of what that looks like. So here's where, and I gave a shout-out to Drew Izing, as Mr. Dodge already mentioned. Also, if you click in that upper left-hand quarter where it says data, you also have the ability to go in and kind of play around with that data. It was interesting. We kind of had initial, every time we went back into the document, Drew added some sort of tab where we could separate the data from the survey. What I have here is the top four career clusters that students were most interested in. And what he did is he kind of created some hotspots. He tells you what the hotspots are. So the darker green means there was greater interest. And then what we've done too is, obviously, he listed the overall ranks, but I'm going to break it down a little bit further. But the top four, as per our students, 6th through 11th grades, were these four career clusters. Law, public, safety, corrections, and security, health and bioscience, engineering, ag, food, and natural resources. Okay? So then the next thing that Drew did is he took all of the responses that were positive, and then he broke it down one step further. Okay, so now I have a rank. So kids were most interested in emergency and fire management services, and corrections, security, and law enforcement. Now, these are both in the same career cluster. Okay? Which is why they both have a score of 172. All right? What I've already done is, if you look up here, I filtered some of the grade levels out of there. So this data right here only shows 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th grade. I took out the juniors and sophomores. Obviously, it makes most sense to take out the juniors, right? Because there's probably not a scenario where they benefit from what we might do in terms of a possible bond issue. Okay? So you can look then, the reason that there's these 125s here, right? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9 of those. Those, the majority of those are going to be in the agriculture career cluster. Okay? Because when the kid responded yes, right? Then obviously, that was a positive. And then it was broken down even further. Okay, does that make sense? So then what I did right here is I took it one step further. Now I've taken the data of just 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th graders, right? Four of the six classes that we had taking the survey. And I now only, I broke it down one step further. I only wanted kids that had interest levels of 3 or greater. So I've eliminated, because it's, it still technically was spit out like it's a positive response, but if they had little to no interest, that's kind of skewing the results. So I think this gives us the most accurate picture of what our students are interested in and the direction that we need to entertain and we need to go. Okay? So we had the most interest in corrections, security, law enforcement, emergency and fire management. Of course, those are in the same path, cluster. I'll explain there. Agribusiness and animal science are both in agriculture. Health science is in the health science pathway. Engineering and applied mathematics, and so forth. Okay? So what I want to do then is let's look, let's first look at law, public, safety, corrections, and security. So within that, it's pretty, it's fairly simple to see when you look at the graphs that Drew added. Okay? So there's two pathways in that one career cluster. Looking at the graph, which graph has the most green? It would be corrections, security, and law enforcement. Okay? So if we were going to pick one pathway out of that career cluster, it would probably be that we wanted to add some courses and then design this pathway. This would be the pathway that we choose. Right? Okay? So that was number one, if you remember right. Okay? This right here is just a pathway design sheet. Why I show this to you is in order for us to, whoops. In order for us to create a pathway in this, what we have to do is we have to have at least one class in each one of those levels. You can see some of the other requirements, required courses for pathway approval. They've started, I mean, a lot of things, every year they, it evolves. Like they add something else, right? And they send you this one email, and you have to check all the pathway changes. And they'll change some of the course codes. I just think sometimes they do that just to see if we're paying attention and really are doing what we're supposed to do. Okay? Now, each one of those pathways kind of has some unique hurdles, so I also wanted to share that with you as well. Okay? So after, after we look at this, I'm sorry, this is the next step. There's this huge There's this huge manual on the state side that then takes into account, okay, if we want to add introduction to emergency medical services, these are the certifications that can teach that course. So that's the next step. I can tell you, for law, public, safety, and security, we have people in the building right now that would be able to teach those courses. It's just a matter of, what can we take off their plates so that we can add these classes without getting to the point where they have four or five preps, right? Without overwhelming. Okay? So this one, I don't want to say it's low-hanging fruit, but of all the pathways, this one is probably most easily doable. Next, agriculture, food, and natural resources career cluster. I cut it off here on the screenshot because we really, in terms of what kids were most interested in, you can see, right? Again, if I look at the area that's most shaded in green, agribusiness and animal science. So if we, if we want to put in one pathway in ag sciences, I think we'd agree the direction that we need to go is agribusiness or animal sciences. There's just some different design sheets you can look at. I did add comprehensive agriculture because there's some things we could already do in there. But here's, here's what I wanted to show in terms of, we can establish this pathway to a degree, but here's been the hiccup that Mr. Dodge, Mr. Bland, and then, as I've talked to some other schools, and we've asked some questions that people have to stay, and sometimes you never seem to get like a clear answer. And I'm actually, I've sent an email before I left for break, well, break, the five-day weekend, and I haven't got a response. Here's what makes this one difficult. If you look here in terms of intro to agriculture, which is the introductory-level course, I have to have an ag or agriculture, agricultural certification. Okay? We don't have that person in our building right now. So we would either have to hire that person and bring them in, which I think is the ideal scenario, right? But I get it, it costs money. Or we have to send kids somewhere like Wellsville so that they can take the introductory-level course. Okay? I kind of joked with Josh Adams, he's the principal over there, I said, hey man, can you schedule this first hour so we can bus kids over and bus them back? And he said, well, I do get a 1/7 of your FTE. I said, done, you know? What's interesting though is, as you go down on some, on some of the certifications, you can see, when we start to get plant and soil science and animal science, you could have a biology degree and teach those courses. All right? Which, their ag science pathway over at Wellsville is intro to agriculture. They offer plant and soil science one year, they rotate the next year, and they offer animal science, right? And then they have basically, I don't think it's on this list right here, but where they'll go out and actually get paired up with farmers and work with farmers. Okay? I show you that one because that's obviously different than the law and public safety in the sense like, we've, we've got to be able to find this person, or we're gonna have to outsource it. Right? Again, I think in an ideal scenario, we want that person in our building. What I'm waiting on to get an answer, and Mr. Dodge, we really haven't got a clear-cut answer, but the way that I understand it, the other key component in the ag science pathway is an FFA chapter, right? And I think to have a Baldwin FFA chapter, we have to have that person. Okay? And I, in an ideal scenario, I think that's what we want for our kids, right? We don't want them to be a part of, I mean, I get it if we have to, but we want them to be the Baldwin USD 348 FFA chapter. So that one's a little bit unique. That third, what was kind of third on there in terms of interest was health science career cluster. These are the three pathways that fall under that career cluster, and students are most interested in health sciences. Okay? So here's where this one gets a little bit unique. You can look at that, that's just basically the design sheet. There's some different ways that you can go. We, we had established a pathway where we were gonna offer sports medicine 1, sports medicine 2, and then I think care of athletes. We had a teacher that moved to another district, and that kind of fell through. Like, they would have been the best person to teach that. We had a lot of turnover in our science department, obviously moving Amanda Lyman out and bringing in some new teachers, and the timing wasn't right to go back to this. We still, we have a health science pathway established, but where it's different than all other pathways is, those courses are in core curriculum, right? You have to have three units of science to graduate, unlike all the other pathways in which, I would guess probably 90% of those courses are electives. So it has its own unique challenges. I show you this because if you look, I know this isn't really apples to apples because Olathe has their academies, and they have to have a 3.5, and they go to a different campus. But the reason I show you this is, basically, this is the extent of our health science pathway right now. We offer biology, chemistry, anatomy, and physiology, and then we offer, they can take AP Bio, environmental science, something that's upper level. But this is what I wanted to point out, and what, what makes this one unique. If you look down here, they have an individual focus. This is where they add or increase the rigor, in my opinion. Sports medicine 1, care of athletes, sports medicine 2, and then senior capstone would be probably trying to get them to go out to the field and have some sort of internship. So why this one is different is, really, to get the health science pathway that we want, it's this, right? The required science courses, and then in addition, we're gonna ask you to take it one step further and increase your rigor and be a, be a part of these other science courses. So there's three different, I mean, of what the students were interested in, there's three different scenarios, right? And all of them are a little bit unique in how we get to the endpoint in offering those. Okay? The vision. This, this picture really doesn't have anything to do with anything, other than, I was driving to school one day, and one of our students was walking to school, and he took out his camera, and he took this picture. So when he got to school, I said, hey man, I said, what were you taking a picture of this morning? He's like, the sunset, or the sunrise. And I said, can you send that to me? And he said, yeah. And I said, do that all the time? He's like, yeah, I take them like almost every day. So he starts to share this with, I just thought it was cool, so, but the vision. It would have been nice if Baldwin's, right, the high school, right? If he was up on a ladder, then it really would have made sense, but...
All right, so I made Brad promise he's willing to let me talk at least a little bit. I kind of felt like I was in your classroom when you were getting into the pie charts, I could really see you go back into your future.
Oh, man, I love line graphs.
That was good. So one of the things we have to talk a lot about is the master schedule between our buildings. So this year and moving forward, we've asked our academic counselors to make a set time for them to get together and have those conversations, which isn't something that's historically happened between our buildings. But my first year in the district, I think we had somewhere around two sections, two classes that were going out to take shop classes from Mr. Harmon. And now we're up to over roughly 50% of our 8th graders go to the high school for at least one class, and we're looking to find ways to increase that for our 7th and 8th graders as well. So making sure that our academic counselors have the time to work on that master schedule is a really, really important step in that process. It can't, it can't be overlooked. Next thing is identifying pathway introductory classes that could be offered at the junior high. Whether that's for a junior high student, or maybe for a freshman, or maybe even a sophomore that needed to get an intro class taken, to get that, that piece taken care of. One of the benefits of doing this, if you remember that, that chart, that Grant showed, the top that had the intro classes, he said, we don't get funding for those. So if we can move those classes back to the junior high, that's to our advantage, because then we can have the kids taking those non-intro classes at the high school where they're getting the funding for that staff person. So we want to try to move as many of those classes into the junior highs as we possibly can off that opportunity. Currently, we have two junior high staff that are willing to take a certification class. Generally, to take that, that certification test licensure, it's around $100, $150, and the district has typically picked up the tab for the teachers to take that test. So we have Mr. Scobie, who's expressed an interest in teaching the industrial technology, and then Ms. Johnson, who's expressed interest in the current life planning class. The challenge with that is that they're both real core teachers, they're teaching a full course load. So for Mr. Scobie, that means he would have to give up a long class period of 7th grade math, and the rest of his classes would kind of have to squish a little bit in order to make that, that happen. When class sizes are small enough, and that's, that's not a big deal, but sometimes when we have a bubble group like we have with our current 7th graders, he would be out that year, and that wouldn't be an opportunity for us. But it might be a stopgap for some spots here and there. So again, that's why that very top point's so important, so as we look at those numbers coming through and go, oh, hey, you know what? On our calendar and our master planning, I think next year we can offer this class to get these kids to open up to these opportunities. So another piece that this would have opened up for us is to remove a requirement. When I started here six years ago, I guess now, it was required that all the career and life planning, or all the students took career and life planning. So I was asking around with Grant and some counselors this year, why, what are we doing then? What's always been asked by the high school? Well, if our goal is to open up those opportunities, let's, let's take that away and just say, they just need to take at least one intro class before they leave 8th grade. So the other piece that Brad talked about was, how are we gonna do this? We need the people. So there are a couple job fairs coming up in the next month or so. Sometimes we go, we have positions we know we're looking for, other times it's just a really good opportunity to kind of put our ear to the ground and say, hey, who's out there? Because I can tell you, finding a job teacher like Mr. Harmon is really, really hard. Finding an ag teacher is can be very, very difficult. Sometimes it's about finding the right person, has the right attitude, and saying, hey, would you go out and take this licensure? Because you've got all the college degree and everything that you need in order to do it, all you gotta do is take this licensure test, and we'll be in that situation. So those are some of the things that we're looking at, working out between our two buildings kind of moving forward here. Brad, I'm gonna turn it back over to you now.
All right. Okay. So in terms of, like, here's what I, in our conversation with Mr. Dodge and Mr. Bland, like, in an ideal scenario, this is what I think the vision is. Imagine a scenario where, and I've looked at it and it's not possible right now. We don't have the space, we don't have the staffing, we are hamstrung a little bit for a high school in terms of, you know, meeting KSD's core requirements and then offering certain CTE courses. But of the, of the 16 career clusters, I think it would be ideal if we were able to offer at least one pathway in each one of those career clusters. Right? Right now, I think we offer courses, or we have established pathways in nine of those, right? Because there is some duplication that just happens naturally. But imagine a scenario where we can hang our hat and say, well, for a high school, we do have at least, like I said, one pathway in each one of those career clusters. Okay? Second, this is, this is the IPS document that we used at conferences. Tyler Wolf and I basically looked at like what Olathe had, and we kind of messed what we currently had. The reason I show you this is, we've added this line here where it says individual focus or area of exploration. So I think in an ideal scenario, we are operating in a sense like Olathe is, where we have a pathway design sheet formed through our IPS document that is specific to the pathways that we offer. We're not there yet because it's just a matter of time and sitting down with my CTE teachers and saying, what, what does this right here need to look like? If I am in manufacturing, what's the course sequence specifically spelled out that kids need to take? Right? The introductory-level course, welding 1, welding 2, welding 3, welding 4, and then so on. Okay? So creating this so that people can specifically see, you know, what courses, what courses do I need to take? And then I also like where we add like the individual focus or area of exploration, because I think there are some informal pathways that don't get the additional CTE funding. And I always talked about like music and some of the fine arts, right? We don't get funding for that, but then it would almost be like informal if we had that there. So a scenario where we have our pathways and the design as explicit as something like Olathe has, right? And then finally, getting it done versus doing it right. Here's the thing, like we, there are schools out there. I'm aware of schools that are getting it done. And what I mean by that is, they, they, I know of a 2A high school that offers like, I think they said they offer 23 pathways. My, I would be hard-pressed to think that they're actually adding all 23 of those and don't just have some classes on the books. Because there are schools in the surrounding area, I mean, in order for me to have a pathway, I just need to have that course on the state side embedded through KC-CMS, which is where we have to spell out what courses we offer, but they may never actually offer that course. And I don't, I think we would all agree, that's not the direction we want to go. We want it to be done right, right? Where we're offering those courses and with the goal of pathway completion and then some CTE credentials. Okay? I know that's, that's a lot. I guess the other thing I would add, so we're gonna have this space, okay? If it's just me, right? And what I want, or what we've talked about, okay? Obviously, we, we have to be able to move Tom Harmon. That, that facility is outdated. Okay? It, you can't tell me as you travel to these other schools and see what they're working with, right? That our kids don't deserve like better than what they already have. Okay? So an updated, you know, facility for Tom, where we have the space, it's, it's clean, more clean, those sorts of things. Imagine a scenario where we have that commercial-grade kitchen. The reality is, our, some of our most popular classes are Jenny Barnard's classes, culinary 1, culinary 2, and they've started culinary 3. And so in an ideal scenario, she only has six kids right now in culinary 3, because that's all she can take on in that space, doing the things that they want to do. Okay? I've seen the commercial-grade kitchens that students have at Ottawa, I've seen what they have at Bonner Springs, right? If we want to, you know, expand what she does and start to do more things at that application level, then let's move out of that space and move her into that space. The other thing that I would really like to see happen, obviously, we need a space for ag science. We currently don't have that at the high school. There's not a place in that building to put somebody else. There's not. Okay? It's like we've already alluded to, Amanda Lyman's in a little space with eight desks, and she, but we're maximizing that space. Okay? Finally, the last thing that I think, and this is all in conjunction with what those results had said, imagine a scenario where we get the training room up out of the basement, right? We had a student get murder wrestling, they're on crutches. They can take, obviously, the elevator, but imagine a scenario where it's up, it's more easily accessible, where we have some natural lighting, and we create it, we design it so that it's like our current science facilities, where if you've ever been in our science classroom, there's a classroom, like just your traditional classroom, then there's the glass partition, and then on the other side could be the training room, which then would be basically our health science, CTE classroom setting, for lack of better terms. So I would imagine, like, if, obviously, if we get to that point, then we would then have the ability to sit down as a group and say, specifically, what do we want that design to look like? Right? I would want that flexibility now. Because I don't wanna, I mean, it wouldn't make much sense to pigeonhole us into what that looks like, and then find out our career interest driven by our kids is something totally different. So I hope that all makes sense. Mr. Dodge, anything?
No. In terms of some space, one of the portions that Derek researched last semester was, does the location of the classroom matter? And by that, it's, we've got some spaces in junior high that we've been looking at, what can we do if we're to make space available? There's one space we've talked about, we could clear it out, but right now it's, it's got some storages. We can clear that out, turn that into a classroom, there, there's an opportunity. To Brad's question, if we're able to find with the bond issue, move that culinary arts into that new addition, what's currently culinary arts has two spaces that could then be levered. So there, there's opportunity for growth over time within those, those areas.
Yeah, those spaces, they would be repurposed, is the way that I understand it. Yeah, those spaces, they would be repurposed is the way that I understand it.
Yep.
I don't know. Sorry if I'm not trying, I know there's been a lot of people and I didn't mean to be long-winded, but yeah, whatever we decide to do, if the bond does pass, just letting you know, so we can have those conversations as to, you know, ag science probably require somebody, the others just require, probably maybe some additional staffing, okay?
So from the survey, the only pathway we currently have that was in the top three or four looks to be the health science one.
We do, and like, I mean, I would just, in all honesty, I would say that one's not really done right, right? It's naturally, because it's in a core area, we could easily create that one. Yeah, I mean, I looked at that too. You could, you can point that out, I mean, yes. But I still think over time, just for a high school, there was already courses that naturally lent themselves to the pathways, right? And some of those things have evolved, and so.
Like the manufacturing one only has three courses, so it's relatively easy to structure and create that way versus the, and some of these have like eight or 10 courses.
Yeah, and, and that's probably something we've also got to sit down, like CTE teachers. We've got to be more strategic because we don't offer all of those all the time.
Yeah, and I mainly bring that up because the survey seems to be speaking to a need we don't currently have availability to service, I mean, through certification or for even having the courses on the books, so.
And I will say, I just want, I should probably add, we have added, I haven't got approval from the board yet, because right now, we're just, we're offering the introductory law course, but we haven't put it on the books because we want to see what type of enrollment that we get. But obviously, pre-enrollment was going on, and so I really didn't have time to come to you all yet, but I would imagine, you know, here before we leave, I want to come to you and say, hey, just approval of this course and give you the rationale, but that would really be it. So we were just on a little bit of a time crunch, that and robotics, which would be our manufacturing pathway.
Any other questions?
I think it's helpful because all of this, it's not just about a potential bond, it's also depending on which direction we go, we have to staff it. You can't just build a space and not be able to staff it. So have to keep our eye on all of those targets, what makes sense for our, our kids in a data-driven way, so thank you for the work that's gone into that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep, thanks.
Okay. I need a bathroom break. I need to talk about this.
Sorry.
Take a five-minute recess and then we'll transition just now to old business. We're just now finished with administrative stuff.
Old business.
Yep.
...found is it's become more costly for the K-8 students that are going virtual versus the 912. And so that's why there's a change in the funding mechanism that's there, which there's a slight increase to both of them, but there's more of an increase there for the K-8. But what I wanted to do here tonight is get your, get approval to continue with the MOU for one more year. In talking with Mr. Dorothy, he had indicated that there's been some discussion in the past about considering our own program. I will tell you in past, from past experiences that I've had, the enrollment number of 40 is a good number. It's generally 30 to 60 is what we leveraged up in Udora to make the decision to move with their own program. And the idea behind that is you've got someone available on the side to be able to run it. Running your own program is, you get the virtual funding. What really benefits running your own program is maximizing the full FTE, that you get the full 5,000 per student FTE. As soon as a student drops below that full FTE, it counts against a portion, which I believe was against 1,800, I believe, last year, if I remember correctly. So that's something to consider if that is something that the board would like to do, to consider studying next year. We certainly can study that for you. But in terms of putting a virtual option together for students next year, I'd like to ask the board to continue with Green Bush for one more year at least.
And can you say again how many we have currently?
Currently, we have 40 students in the program enrolled as of January 15th.
And that's K through 12?
K through 12.
But it's predominantly secondary students?
It's mostly secondary students.
So, yeah, I think we should study, because we aren't getting the full 5,000 with, when we offer that.
We're not getting the full 5,000. And there are districts who have the option to allow virtual students to participate in athletics.
Right.
Right now, CAESHA, they require a brick and mortar class to be able to participate. Well, as soon as that happens, that student's virtual funding drops dramatically. And so that's something that does impact our funding for that. But one of the things that it does do, that I think is important, is it gives those virtual students who graduate with a Baldwin High School diploma, it gives them a connection to the overall education experience, which also includes athletics and activities. So.
I don't want to borrow this discussion. And we agreed to take one because we didn't have enough time to really research and look into doing it for this past year and a portion of the leadership transition and everything else we've had this year. I think it kind of got put on the back of my head, but I really truly believe it's something that we should work into. Just with the direction, I think being a leader in that space or waiting until people are losing students or other districts are getting students for having programs is something that I guess is something we should look into.
The window to, the way the state has their new program requirements, you need to let them know of an intent to apply for a virtual school mid-February, like the 15th or the 10th of February. And an application has to be submitted through someone in the March, and then you get feedback that has to be submitted sometime in May, and then they let you know in June if you are good to go. And then you can literally start program July 1st. You have that flexibility. The first account window starts July 1st through a day in September, and then there's another short count window. And the student has to be online engaged for two six-hour chunks of time within those two windows.
Since we just did pre-enrollment, are there any numbers that indicate what next year? I mean, we know what it is this year, but as we continue to study, we want to look at what's the interest level next year. Do we have any idea about that? Sorry to put you on the spot. With GBA pre-enrollment, do you have any indication about that from the secondary level?
Currently, I really don't.
Okay.
All we can really go on is, you know, the number of students obviously that we have now, assuming that that's what they would choose to continue to do.
Right.
And then we, of course, we had some that did come back into the building, and then there might be just two or three where they weren't successful through GBA, and we would make kind of determination as per our policy, like, hey, we've tried this for one, maybe two semesters. Now we're kind of in a hole. We think it's in your best interest to come back in the building because we feel like we can best support you in that way. So there might be a few of those. So, but I would assume if we had three come in, we have three leave. So I would probably go off of what we have right now.
One of the changes that Green Bush is asking us to make is to be, to leverage the same class assignment portion that they leverage with the remaining districts that they have. Currently, we're assigning students in virtual seven classes. And for students that are motivated or on task, that are self-driven, that's not a problem. For students where anxiety may be high, or they may have, you know, some, I guess anxiety really is the victim, anxious there, that can quickly overwhelm a student. The Green Bush Virtual Academy was not designed for students that are alternative in that sense. And so you assign two courses. It generally takes four weeks to complete a course, and then you get another one added to it. So you constantly have two courses added. That still puts you in enough time to complete these acquired courses per semester, per year. And in some cases, it allows students to accelerate. And they've asked us to move on with that. One of the things that, if you're a student where you're, Green Bush Virtual Academy is where you're going to as an alternative because the brick and mortar overwhelms you, having seven classes assigned at once can also quickly overwhelm you, and you can feel behind before you even start. And so that's, the success of Green Bush's program has been built on that, two at a time, we're going to get you through it. So that is.
See, to me, that's so interesting, because that's more like accelerated college courses. You hammered you out. And so I didn't realize that that was, so you're saying the standard practice in other places is to do it that way?
Do it that way.
At our, the government, they still do it at eighth grade, although I think they get two buses at a time.
Okay.
At the high school. I mean, right now for us, I think that's.
And it's the high school that they were concerned about.
Yeah.
And it's not to any fault or any doing. They're just noticing that it's not as successful under that model. They'd like us to go more towards the.
And we, the only thing we were trying to wrap our heads around, and we, Mr. Dodge and I have been in conversation, is just, obviously then, if we do have a scenario where the kid, maybe they only pass three, now they're.
Eligibility.
Yeah. Eligibility would be some issues.
Well, with eligibility, you still have to pass five courses.
Previously.
Previously. So that's not an issue.
Okay.
And when you're a virtual student, you're no longer on a traditional grade card, if you will, because your transcript's updating in real time. And so that's the, that's the part that is, to wrap your head around that.
Yeah, yeah.
That's one of the biggest paradigm shifts that needs to occur.
So like progress things that coaches want to ask for, like, hey, where are you at? There just needs to be some kind of equivalent built. Okay. That's the part I was like, okay.
You know, this program here is approved through CAESHA. They leverage this in other districts. I've gotten confirmation from Don Grossman here that this does not, this will not change the CAESHA eligibility.
Right.
If you're doing NCAA division, those are, you have to take specific courses from Edge Annuity.
So the GBA is not.
They're, so they have their NCAA courses that are Edge Annuities, full-on, everything out of the box. If you're taking a G, a Green Bush Virtual Academy course, they have the ability to scale it back so it's just the Kansas required standards. The reason is, is through the clearinghouse, Edge Annuity got a certain item, or there's certain courses approved, and we can't alter that for that eligibility piece.
Do we know what our graduation rate is out of our virtual seats?
I can't, I don't have that information. I didn't, it hasn't been provided to me, and I can certainly look into that and get that for you.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Just because, I mean, I see we had nine kids last year in their 12th graders, and eight kids is here in their 12th. I don't know what their projection is for graduation, but let me sure we're getting quality for them to graduate as well.
You know, and one of the things that Green Bush does with their graduations, they have their graduation ceremonies, and it's something that, when I worked for Green Bush and oversaw the programs and Turner and at 500 reach, those are fun celebrations to be at. So I certainly want to continue with that tradition there and focus on that graduation rate.
Like, I'm sorry. By keeping the status quo, it allows that opportunity to study that as well as how to thoughtfully oversee it, because this really becomes its own entity of management. So that helps give us a guided discussion about what that looks like too, and that this year would give the time for you all to look at that. I'm comfortable with that.
And I don't, I think it's fair to add, like, we really have two different groups that go to GBA, and we have the high flyers, which, I mean, they could probably pass 14 classes if they wanted to, right? And they're going to do the work regardless of whether NCAA or not. And then we truly have, for whatever reason, you know, the students that are suffering such severe anxiety that they can't come into the building. And so those are really the two groups. And there's a plethora of reasons. Like, we don't, if you're on track to graduate and do the things to do, then you should have that opportunity. But we have some kids, you know, they haven't been successful. So the hard part, we would ask them to come back in. This is because, you know, out of a year where they should pass, you know, those required classes, we're not getting anywhere near that. So, which then I don't want to, we've got to try something else because I don't know what we're going to be drawing on.
We've been, we've been brainstorming, what are some things we can do to support them on that so we don't, you know, so that they don't feel like they're signed off on the virtual, and we'll see them in May. We've talked about that.
Yes.
For the MOU, we do.
The only, the last thing I would say, though, with some of those kids that suffer severe anxiety, we, I mean, they have the ability to come in for one hour, right? We've structured it before where we gave them a fifth period, you know, so that they come in and have lunch. We've done some seventh period things because they, they're more than welcome to come in and access any club, you know? If they want to be a part of D and D, or Anime Club, or Film Society, they have the ability to do that. And then obviously, if they want to be a part of co-curriculars, extracurriculars, they've got to be.
Some of them don't want to.
So I would love to be able to find ways to change that because, you know, I'm always going to.
We want everybody to be bulldogs.
Yeah, well, yeah. I mean, I want them to be in the building, but I get it.
Okay. Thank you. Can I make a motion? Accept the MO if you're comfortable, accepting the agreement as it's presented. And also, sorry, I just kicked me off. Does it have within the agreement the switching to the two-class format? Is that something that needs to be?
That's not, that's not, no, no.
That's just something that will happen as part of best practice.
I'll make a motion to approve the MOU as presented for 23, 24.
Yeah.
All right. Kelly has moved. Chris has seconded to accept the MOU, the GBA online school for 23, 24 as presented. All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand.
Aye.
Seven oh. And then we'll study that over this next year. Awesome. Thank you. English Language Arts Materials Approval.
All right, I'm going to give you an update on our ELA, Elementary Adoption, and make a recommendation for materials tonight. So I just want to start again with a big thanks to our committee. We have Stephanie here to support our recommendation tonight, and just want to thank them all for their hard work this year. So we ended in December presenting two different resources to you. Since then, the committee members have taken those back to their grade level teams. They've had discussions and inputs for everybody. And we selected a program that we're going to recommend tonight and talk about approval. I just want to give a quick update of kind of how the adoption material process works. Every five to seven years, we have a rotating schedule to evaluate materials, see what needs to be changed or updated. It's been about seven years for Elementary ELA. We adopted Wonders in the spring of 2016 for that following year. We use textbook funds to invest back into textbooks. So I've been working with Nate to make sure that we have the funds and the budgets to make this purchase. Since our last ELA adoption, there has been a House Bill 2567 that now requires districts to have an ELA program that supports the science of reading and uses evidence-based instructions for ELA. So just a real quick, basic explanation of what science of reading is. It's science-based research, research about writing and reading and the issues that can be related to that. It describes the development of the reading skills for a typical and the atypical reader. Early literacy instruction is extremely important where they can concentrate on those foundational skills. So we were really looking for a program that had great focus on those foundational skills. So tonight, I am recommending CKLA by Amplify. We think this is the best choice for students and teachers. It has what we found the strongest of the science of reading, lots of diverse content knowledge. It's rigorous. It has deep content knowledge. So I kind of gave you the program guide that they hand out more in depth of what that program looks like. For kindergarten and second grade, they have kind of two different, two different ways to teach it. So it's going to be the language of comprehension, where they're going to build knowledge and vocabulary. And then they have another 60 minutes that really works on those foundational skills, like phonemic awareness and phonics. So it's kind of two separate portions that equal 120 minutes. And for third through fifth grade, they integrate those two strands together onto one, focusing more on complex text, writing, vocabulary, spelling. Third grade looks similar. They'll do 120 minutes. And then fourth and fifth is a 90-minute ELA block. This shows the different topics and themes throughout the year for each grade level. Lots of science, history, literature. And then there's three strands that follow them from grade to grade each year, kind of building on that knowledge and information. So lots of variety, interesting topics. We think this is the best resource, so I'm recommending the CKLA tonight for our material Any questions? So we kind of got creative. I think we're right at $100,000 for the actual material, and then I think $11,000 for the professional development to come in. We did professional development. It's going to be kind of customized, K-2s is a separate one from 3-5.
So it's a full-day onsite for each and a half-day?
Yes. So we're thinking in our professional development day in April, having a full day, and then having them come back and do the half-day in August before we start.
I move for you to accept the recommendation for the Amplify CKLA reading curriculum.
I would second that, but I also wanted to say, I know this is a better process, so we're fully unioned and we're.
Thank you.
It's the thing we do. So, so that's the second.
Susan has moved, Andy has seconded to approve the CKLA quote as presented. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. Thanks, echoing Andy. Thank you all for the work over months and months.
Yes, actually, and the team of teachers that worked on this spent hours in Zoom meetings at Green Bush, studying the research on it. It's been a great process, so thank you for your work on it as well.
Mission statement.
Yeah. Mission statement, okay. So last month, I shared with you the feedback loop that was created as part of our TASN, TASN work that we did with regards to our NTSS realignment, and it's within that process that we were able to develop the recommended mission statement. Shared this with you last month with the idea for ponder it, wordsmith it if you felt necessary, and open the floor there. If there's a recommendation to approve, we'd take that as well. The mission statement was Baldwin built an adjective, preparing students to positively impact the world through academic, social, emotional, and behavioral success. We wanted it to be something that was reflective of the work that we have been doing, the strategic planning that's taking place, as well as something that could be easily remembered and recited by staff and students.
I move we approve the mission statement with graphic.
With graphic.
Hi. Susan moved, I heard Phil, sorry. Susan moved, Phil seconded to approve the mission statement as presented with the graphic. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven zero. All right, bond exploration update. We'll keep this somewhat brief so that we can get to new business, but in an attempt to try to be comprehensive while being brief. Phil and Kelly, if there's anything I missed, call her. We have been, let's see, last week, we met with, met again with the architecture team and also our construction manager. Some initial feedback that we've received pretty, with, you know, I would say frequent regularity, right away was, wait, if the field, the potential field is going to be that way, for it to function the way we have envisioned it, it has to have turf. I don't think anybody disagrees with that. In our original idea of trimming costs, and perhaps adding something to a field we already had, that's kind of where that came from. But we also discussed with them this week that that's part of their job and part of the reason why you hire a construction manager. And it's all built into the language of the resolution, is to basically solve challenges. I don't think there's any disagreement among any committee representative that that facility, for it to function for marching band, and soccer, and football, and community, and rec programming, that it's going to have to be turf. It does not add anything to what was approved for the overall price that will be advanced to the voters for election. It's simply a matter of, as all of our folks who came in and interviewed talked about, there's a process in, once you get to that point, and then you start working out details, there's always an ongoing process of where there can be cost savings, where dollars can be, that have been leveraged can be purposed, that that's normal, it's part of it. And so I know that that's something that's come up several times, and there's no disagreement that that should probably happen. Where does it come from? You know, it's not going to come from secure entrance or enclosure type things. It probably will come from a part of a locker room. But they felt very confident that there was going to be no problem with achieving everything that we had on our list and also being able to do that. That's why they're the experts, and that's why we hired them. So I definitely wanted to report that part. What else? We're also working on assembling a committee to be able to give information or facilitate events for the community. Board members, just for an item of clarification, board members can't specifically organize any of that, but what we have been told and what we're verifying, that we can be available for gatherings to provide factual information. So for example, if there's a committee of people who are wanting to get that information out to people, and they organize or host an event, and they want to invite one of us to share facts and information, you know, we can't wear a big button that says, vote yes. We have a right to vote, just like everybody else does. So we're not in a campaign. We have to be very careful about those and mindful of those lines. We can't campaign, but we can certainly be present at those functions, answer questions, provide information. Part of the work that's going on is working more, getting into the specifics of the rendering so that we can get those out to community members. Part of that is linked to the work with the CTE pathways. It would have been foolhardy for us to say, well, we're, I'm going to, let's designate this as the, this wing. We needed to know what our students' needs are, what we have staffing for. You can't put the cart in front of the horse. So there is a deliberate process to this.
Yeah. And to expand on that, that is very intentional and detailed work that the architect or the builders are not willing to put, go to the time and effort to put together until something's been approved.
Right.
So it's got to be a vote first, and then a lot of those details, I mean, we're seeing that, we approve, not approve, and that kind of energy, that more time is going to be spent on those details.
And we have checked that, and everyone has said, yes, you're doing it the way it's done. And so, Phil, anything you want to add?
No.
All right. Anything else I'm missing that's a big bullet point? We're going to continue. We have a meeting again this week. We still are doing that subcommittee work on the side, and we'll continue to provide those updates. But always know that if any of the rest of you have questions about specifics as they come along, please don't hesitate to get in touch with us in the meantime.
I'm just curious, when you say turf, I picture little bits of old tires flying up. Is that over a tire now?
Basically, I think, I think that the generation of turf is a little bit beyond that now.
Technology.
Yeah. But basically, yes.
Yeah.
She's come out of the field cold in little rubber places.
And we think it's a thousand or a million.
Yeah. That's what we've been told.
And like I said, it doesn't add anything, and it's all, that's why the language of the resolution is, here's what it is, here's the best we can guess. When we talk to them, like, they don't feel like that's going to be a problem at all.
So it was more needed when we were looking in the Core 3.
Right.
When we go to the Core 3 plus, that creates more capacity to work into the budget. And I think we've made it clear to them that that is an intent that we want, so.
Well, otherwise, that field's going to be trashed. Because, I mean, you're going to have active games on that Monday nights, Tuesday nights, Thursday nights, Friday nights, and then banned if they're practicing on it. Anyway.
Well, and the upfront costs, the upfront cost is there, but it does have a reduction.
That's what I was going to say. Again, it's not cheap, and there is water and snowing and.
The gap gets closer over.
Trying to get somebody to keep their alive.
Kelly's absolutely right. The gap gets closer over the long-term investment, because we're already spending, the money we spend on an annual basis, not just a lease baker, but then the seeding and all the work that has to go all the time for that. Yeah, the gap, that's a great way to phrase it. So we feel like that's the right, the right way to go, but we certainly wanted to check what, that was their recommendation too, and so wanted to make sure and report that part back. Okay. Any other comments or questions related to that? All right. New business? Glenn's been waiting patiently.
I've voted twice.
Trail project easement.
I received an email from Glenn a few weeks ago. There's some. I received an email from Glenn a few weeks ago. There, there's some work to be done on a city sidewalk project at Sixth and Quail, and through that, there are a couple of easement requests that someone would like to make for that project to go through, and I just asked Glenn and Jason to be here to talk about that a little bit. And I apologize for the, the length of the meeting, but could, would you mind talking a little bit more about that project and then?
We have some complimentary thinments here.
Right, yeah.
If I start, I can't stop.
Right, yeah, look out, that's right, he's an engineer, so anyway. Yeah, as Mr. Dodge just outlined, it's, we're doing another trail project. We've had some pretty good success getting some funding from KDOT here over the past few years, and a lot of that has to do with BG Consulting. And, you know, KDOT's been good to us, and so here comes another project, and all these things have easements, temporary easements, permanent easements, and whatever, so that's what we're sending you and asking for approval here this evening. It's, it's no more complicated than that. So we're constructing an easement in Quail, and what was the other street? I forget.
Sixth and Quail.
Yeah, okay, we've got like four of these projects in a row, and then we're doing, we're actually applying for a grant that would connect Ottawa with Baldwin City, and so that'll be the fifth one, so anyway. So that's all we're doing. I don't know if you had questions about those or not, it's pretty straightforward. Forget the timing of this. No, no, that's a completely different, sorry, I shouldn't even mention that, no, this is, this is a very different project. Yeah, that's, that's, that's a much bigger project.
But it's still called, it's still part of the trail project.
It, right, all these things are safe routes to school, or we're calling them actually trails rather than just sidewalks because they're wider and they tend to be multi-purpose trails, and so, and that's been kind of a philosophy that we've approached KDOT with over the past four or five years now, is to call these multi-use trails.
Is there any risk or negative potential to the straight toward this?
No, there isn't.
I may emotionally accept the trail project easement as requested.
Thank you. Kelly moved and Tony seconded that we approve the temporary and permanent easement transfers with the city of Baldwin as presented. All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks a lot.
Would you stay longer?
Narcan policy with our nurse Lisa Patrick is going to present that.
Lisa and I have been having this conversation. It's one of those difficult yet important conversations in today's world with regards to opioid and, in more specific terms, the fentanyl impact that's taking place. She's worked really hard to secure some vials of Narcan through the course of the year, and through DECA she's been able to get some. But in order for us to be able to use this and be a part of the training process, there's a policy that's essential to have, so.
Right.
Lisa.
Right. And currently, R S R O Jake Montney carries one on him, you know, daily, but in the event he's not available, I think it's just a better idea to be proactive and have it in the health office of both the junior high and the high school. I hope that we would never, ever have to pull it out of that med cart, but yeah, just think it's a good idea to, to be ready in case we were to have to. There's already one change on that policy that I sent you, under the training portion. It says a trained R N would train staff, and that's not possible this year. I'm not trained to do any training, but I would be this summer at the Kansas School Nurse Conference, and then I could train staff next year. So this year, it could be our local pharmacist, DECA also has a training that could, they could provide for the staff. So I'd like to just change that to a trained professional, and then that would just cover us for the rest of this, rest of this school year. And my hope is to get several staff trained in both the junior high and the high school for this last quarter. And then next year, we would just implement that training for all certified staff for CPR and first aid training. Mainly because I think it's important that everyone just knows the signs and symptoms, because you have to react pretty quickly. Any questions that I might be able to answer?
I move we accept the policy with the amendment to the training for this year.
Who would like? Who's that? I move we adopt the Narcan, oh, I'm sorry, Susan moved and Kelly seconded that we approve the Narcan policy as presented with the amended words of trained professional. All those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero.
Thanks, everyone.
Thanks for the update in advance so that we could all be processing, looking at, I mean, those updates are so, to all of you, they're very helpful. Meetings are long enough. If we're just, if it's brand new and it comes in this room, I mean, so it, it's a hard topic. So thank you all for sending those things ahead of time. All right, enrollment study. You have a packet that has been printed off for you in your folders. Finally, would you like, would you like a thinment?
I'll take you up on those when I leave.
Get one for the road.
I've asked, we've got Clay Guthbiller here, he's a former superintendent. He works with R S P, a enrollment, I guess enrollment study firm that goes into communities and provides projections through various projects that they do, and they spend a good deal of time studying the community and giving, giving districts a kind of a vision and outlook of what the enrollment could do. As we're going into this next phase, as, as we're looking at things, it's a good idea to kind of get what our baseline is. We've, we've seen our enrollment kind of go up and down with a kind of a downward trend. But we're starting to see this year a increased enrollment side. As we're going into some of this future, as we're looking at kind of resetting our deck with the potential bond issue with the capital improvements that are there, now's a good time with Panasonic being on the, on the horizon. Now's a good time to start that process of looking at what our enrollment could be with a baseline check. And then in a couple of years, revisit this again to see where that trajectory of that baseline is, is going, so.
Thank you. Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to be here, and it's always fun, having been a superintendent for 26 years, it's always fun to come to the board meetings and hear things, but I had three things that I learned tonight. One, the final word that the young man spelled I hadn't heard of. So secondly, it's still nice to know that the state doesn't give you the answers that you need to know. That's nothing new. And the other thing, just by hearing your discussions and your presentations and your agenda items tonight, it's, it'd be easy for me to see why families would want to come and read, okay, you can go to school here in 348. The programs and the services and the things you're talking about are, are spot on, so hats off to you on, to you for that. Just again, thank the district and superintendent Dodge for providing R S P the opportunity to submit a proposal for planning services and specifically the enrollment analysis. Superintendent Dodge, I think, has received that proposal. I'm not going to get into the specifics of it tonight, a lot of the costs and so on, he has that. But tonight, I just have a short presentation, I think 11 slides. I want to share with you the information that's related to the enrollment analysis, which we believe is the foundation for any long-term planning. When you talk about what's the most important data point that you have as a board and as a school district and as a superintendent, to me, it was how well our kids did. And secondly, what's the enrollment now and what's it going to be in the future when you're funded and all the things that go with that? So with the help of my partner here, I'll let you run that, and we'll, we'll go to the first, first slide. R S P and Associates has been around for a while. We were founded in 2003 by Rob Swartz, and he's still the president and the lead man in this. And what we are is a professional educational planning firm. We have about 100 and, over 130 clients in 13 different states. We do most of our work in Kansas and in Iowa. And so we're, have a planning team of a number of people, of analysts and so on, that provide the services. There's a list of some of the projects that we had last year with Gardner, DeSoto. You're probably keeping track of the Lawrence things that are going on. I live in Lawrence, so it's been pretty interesting watching what's going on up there in Spring Hill. I think the greatest thing that I'd point out in this is that the accuracy that we have in enrollment projections is, I didn't believe it when I first got to working with and using it. We used it, the services for a number of years, but it is tremendous accuracy that they have in projecting enrollment. The core services that we provide fall along three different domains. First of all, I mean, the main thing is the data analysis that we do and the enrollment analysis that we provide for you. Along with that is, is a capacity analysis that we provide with that data. Eventually, there may be potential for you to do boundary analysis. We do that. And then we do public facilitation too. We also do master planning, which is one of the things that we're doing with Lawrence right now, and the, and the board and the community in Lawrence is, is faced with some pretty big situations there. Things that, you know, you don't have going on here, but we are working with them also, and we are, we provide public facilitation. The enrollment analysis is really, again, the foundation for all of the long-range planning that we do. The enrollment process is, the foundation of that is basically based upon four different things. So for, in order for us to, to, and for you to really investigate future options down the road when you're talking about bond issues and so on, you need to have a comprehensive understanding of the data that's related to all this. And so there are four parts that really are the foundation for this process. First of all, we do tremendous work in, in the demographics, understanding your past, the current things that are going on in your district, and the future in terms of your population. Why, secondly, why people choose to live in your community. We do through surveys and through other aspects. And then those people that choose to come and live, are they going to send their kids to your schools? And so I noticed that says attend the unit for schools. I'm, I'm thinking that might be, are you unit, do you have a unit for school? Okay, I'm thinking that's something from one of the other presentations, but nonetheless. Secondly, is housing development. What types of inventories are existing in terms of housing? And what are the future inventories by the type of housings? Because you have to realize that different types of housing yield different, have different yields of students. If you have a single family, multifamily establishments, that they're more. So secondly is the development in the housing. Enrollment trends and patterns in the enrollment process across the district, and then also the capacity of your schools, understanding the building utilization of, that you have and what programs and services that you're providing. I took a lot of math classes, but I have never really figured out these formulas. And I don't think anyone else has because that's Rob's magic, but the, the central focus is the methodology that we use in, in forecasting enrollments. And so this is the central focus of everything that goes on. This model is based on what's happening in the school district, and the best data is statistically analyzed to provide an accurate enrollment forecast. In this report that you'll receive, you will find that there are some very, very professional, helpful reports and maps that are easy to understand in terms of your demographic trends, how your schools are utilized. And then if you get further down the line in what types, the timing of construction that you might have based upon the enrollments that you have. And you can look at on the right, the variables that are examined in these planning areas, and it's just not limited to these things, but you get an understanding of how deep this dive is into the enrollment process. In the forecasting enrollment, the power of getting the data that we have is developed by having planning areas. And your whole district will be broken down into planning areas. There could be hundreds of them, and each one of those households is labeled, and they analyze those. That provides us more information in terms of what's going on. We look at square footage of houses, values of houses, all the inventory, what's being constructed and so on, and it's by year. And then you're able to, all of these things, using the statistical model, have a different yield rate. So it's very interesting and, and very powerful and very accurate in what we do. The examples of a couple of reports that'd probably be most helpful to you. Number one is this one here. It's a past, current, and future enrollment example. I believe this is an example from Udora. If I'm not mistaken, we're doing the work with them, but it shows over time what's happened with the past enrollments at elementary, middle, and second, high school levels with the enrollments, and then what we're projecting also. And then there are some breakdowns that we provide in terms of what the overall enrollments are doing, decreasing or increasing at the different levels, and some explanations. But this is very helpful in showing historically what's going on and what's going to be projected in the future. The next one is the building enrollment projections, and again, this is an awful busy sheet, but it's fairly easy to understand. What you're talking about here is terms of past enrollments, projected enrollments. And then we also take those enrollments and we develop a percentage of how well your buildings are being used in terms of the capacities there. So if we went down here to Augusta High School, and this is from Augusta, what this would show you that it was determined by the folks in the district, and you would do that, you would set the capacities for your buildings on, on what those capacities would be working with R S P. But in this case, the capacity that was 800 Augusta High School, it was a 912 building, shows you the number of out-of-district students that attend, or that are in the, in the district, your in-district students, and then the numbers that attend. I mean, you'll find that you have in-district students, but they may not, they may live in your district, but they're not attending. And so we have some other forms that show, but if you go down here, then underneath that, it gives you some, a good data in terms of the elementary changes, the percentage, how your enrollments have gone up or not, and, and so on. So very, very helpful in terms of your past enrollment, what we're projecting, and then how well your buildings are being utilized in terms of having room and space for, for more kids or the potential of needing more bonding for other facilities. And then there's a legend here, it's kind of bottom now. In this case, we have a yellow form that goes across here, a yellow that would show that any of the buildings that are over capacity, there weren't any in this situation, but we set the capacity levels at 75% utilization. Then anything over that, we show the, how that comes out with, with your district enrollment data. So again, very helpful, very specific, and very useful as you look down the road in your long-range planning. Couple other forms that we do, out-of-district analysis, which is important. This is Douglas County from Udora, pretty interesting. What we know is that there's, oh, what did I see? The majority of the out-of-district students that Udora gets come from Lawrence Public Schools, but this just shows you, this is on a county basis of what's going on in terms of out-of-student analysis over time in the, in those five years. And then we set up some takeaways that, that are revealed by the data. And the next one is a three-year student migration trend. What students were in your district last year that aren't in it this year, and, and vice versa. The out-migration and in-migration is important. Again, as you look at facilities and showing the number of students in, in your, in K through 11, and what those observations are and the takeaway, the takeaway for, I'm not sure what the arithmetic this was, but you can see that there was a lot of out, out-migration in, in that area. So, in conclusion, we think that we have a lot to offer as an organization. R S P and Associates has been around for quite some time. I'd like to just point out a few of the things. Again, I think we go back to the accuracy of our data. It's just spot on, and the only things that we've really had a situation with, with our enrollment is during the COVID years. It was very difficult. the COVID years. It was very difficult for a couple of years. We did develop some statistical things that helped us forecast during those years, but we're pretty much back where we should be to now, where we should be. We take pride in working with everyone in the district, the board, the administration, a lot of folks in the community. We work with the city, the county, and to come up with a good product, to make sure that the decisions that you make are in the best interest of other students. We provide, I believe, as a superintendent, one of the biggest things that I saw, and what I think is a real key, is we're able to be an impartial third party that can provide data that, you know, the public, when they deal with boards and talk with boards, maybe that, what isn't, you know, maybe it's not there. But it is certainly with us, is we provide a third party and assist you in achieving the things that you're trying to do in your school improvement plans. So, long story short, we're excited to partner with the district, with Superintendent Dodge and the board, and provide you an enrollment data that's going to serve you hopefully well into the future. The timeline I did look at is, I think we're looking at completion in November.
What I talked about is next month, presenting to you with the intent to, speaking of, if that is the case next month, then we'd be looking at a November report to the board, their findings. The benefit in doing so is it give you the September 20 count from last year, in addition to what they collect within their work. It also allows for some of the development within our areas that are currently in construction, be there, see if they can do a little bit more accurate picture on the rooftops, so that they can take that scientific formula that he put up on the board to help project out these five-year projections. Having been in Udora and having seen the work that they do and the results that it provides, I wanted the most relevant and current information for that time, to set up an opportunity in a couple of years beyond that, to see where did that projection land itself.
I'd entertain. Any questions you have?
So, you have resources or data when there are situations like this Hannah Savi project in DeSoto, and how that might play into what would be normal projections that might have some different impact?
Yes. Rob is working with those folks, and, you know, all the development. He works in Udora, Tom and Oxy, we work in Lawrence. And so he's got a pretty good handle on that. I'm not sure that he's really forecasting anything right yet until we know a little bit more about the specifics of it. But yes, that would be something that would be a part of that report.
Part of this report now, or?
It would, it could be, there would be a part, an enrollment, enrollment analysis that you would do, that would be taken into consideration.
I think that's the benefit of doing it now, than again in a couple of years, because within five years is where that first wave.
I'm going to ask a question that's going to make you not like me, because I don't expect really anybody to have the answer, because it's new. But with this new reality of open borders, how is, I can't imagine how to do an enrollment study. The formula blows my mind, and I think it's awesome. But it's also within a defined set of geographic boundaries, whereas those can go away. Is there any way to account, does that just kind of like, is that built into a standard of error, you know, of the results that we might get?
I think to some degree, but I think that'd be a question that Rob would want to answer. I'm basically a consultant. I do a lot of the public work with the facilitation and so on. But I know Rob could certainly give Superintendent Dodge that, and I'll make a note of that.
Sure. And I'm not, I'm just, I'm curious about how that factors into everyone's ability to do an enrollment study, because it's new territory.
I was thinking about a question, too, on this page. Asking, I tried that equation for the district, saying, I believe you were like saying, if some of these students just go into this whole, go and take, and have to.
That would help to make those, yes.
About 11 months, we'll be, based on statute, we will be determining those grade level caps through the grade, and then program department at the high school level. That's another.
Another reason why this is going to be a helpful tool.
Why this is going to be helpful.
Be a good problem.
Yes.
Yes.
Be a nice thing to have, a nice issue to have.
So I know this enrollment study is category and projections. You just mentioned consulting. Do you guys have a component or additional service where you're able to consult based on your findings on what you see in our area that helps enhance your enrollment?
Yeah, there may be some things in the final report that we would see, that we would, you know, let the district know that might be more of a benefit, or things that might be more of a detriment to some of your growth.
This is awesome. Thank you for the information. Anybody else have?
Yeah. If anything else comes up, if you have any further questions, if you just get those to Superintendent Dodge, and he can get those on to us, and we'll look forward to serving you. We appreciate you and the time tonight.
Please take some of them that's free for you to trip back to Lawrence.
I'll have one.
You can have more than one. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Board member input. Co-op report, or interlocal report is what we should be saying.
Let me update that for the next.
Yeah. Dan did that, so I don't, we haven't had a meeting yet, tomorrow. We, but, do you think we'll see your thoughts on the end of the report?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Moving on.
Okay. Anyone have anything under miscellaneous?
Grant just updated with the girls' send-off information.
Oh, great. Can you read that?
State wrestling's send-off for the girls' wrestling team will happen tomorrow at 11:15 a.m. in the VHS Commons.
And then I corrected myself and said both teams on top of it tonight.
You didn't send that part. Okay. Both teams, 11:15 tomorrow. Okay. Send off. Thank you. I have one miscellaneous thing, just so it's on our radar. So with superintendent evaluations for first year, first two years, we have to do it twice a year. So just giving the heads-up that we will be starting that again next month. I would like to do it differently this time. Instead of doing the chase down, we'll just take executive, even if that needs to be its own special meeting, we'll just go into executive session. We'll use the same tool, but we're going to do it all at the same time, and then it's done, and then we can present in April. Just, you know, so we'll talk more about that, but I didn't want that to take anyone off guard. I know that's weird to do it twice a year. It's weird for you, too. So, but just so that's on your radar. We'll be doing that again. Okay, I'm done.
One of the things that I was going to offer out, as Brent kind of alluded to it, is with field trips, piece, moving that to consent agenda as an opportunity to kind of expedite things, unless anybody has any objections to that. That's what I'd like to offer moving forward.
All right. Three-year staffing plan.
All right. What I've put for you in board docs, and you have it in your folder, is the first draft of the three-year staffing plan. The first year is where we've gone through and prioritized. The second year is beyond that, is where I want you to not look at this with an overwhelming sense. The idea behind this is that you, as we go through and we prioritize, and we start mapping out future years. And so what I've done there is taking the items that came to us as an operations team, we talked about what are for next year, what are those priorities there. And so the items that are highlighted in green would be the top priorities that we've talked about and we've landed on. This came from feedback from the operations team, as well as some of the items that have come from our meetings. And, yes.
Well, maybe I'm asking the question too soon, but are these, I'm sure there are probably miscellaneous, but are they vacancies, replacements, or additions?
That's what I'm going to, I'm going to get to that. So, no, I'm going to get to that. So, the first item that I'll talk about is the secretary item at the primary center. We've got one secretary at the primary center, and we've got two at the others. And she does an amazing job, but it's really something that needs to. I think, from my understanding, in terms of looking at history, it was one of those things that a couple of years ago, it was removed or positioned somewhere else in the building. And we're at a place now where we need to add. So that would be an addition there. The second item there, the elementary counselor for the primary and intermediate, that too would be an addition. The benefit that that provides is it gets, basically, think of it as your core or your social-emotional learning that takes place within the MTSS work. It provides the character education piece. This is the individual that can go into classrooms and with a consistent message, teach those character development lessons within second step in conjunction with the teacher. So that as we're going through our MTSS process, our teachers can also serve then as a supporter of that, the hearing consistent and common language. Then the teachers are then tier-two interventionists with students. And it also allows our social workers then to focus at that tier-three level in more of your one-on-one groups. It also provides a mechanism for social learning, for social groups to take place, friendship groups, lunch bunches, if you will. And it's a starting point. Whether what we're seeing is some of the behaviors that escalate as they get through junior high and into high school, is we need some more character development there, those character skills. And so we feel that having that, the triad of a counselor with the social worker and with the school psychologist gives us the ability to put that whole cloud mechanism in place, where all three can be available when crisis is needed, but they all have their essential functions as they move forward. The CTE items, you'll see three of them there. I've bolded and italicized them from the standpoint of, that was all pending some of the data maneuvering that Brent was going through within our presentation. Definitely, the public safety and security and health sciences and neck sciences teachers, those are where that data pointed us. The reason there, italicized also there with an asterisk, is some of them contain current staff members that Brandon talked about. Maybe, you know, can we work this so that we can handle it internally? Others might be an addition there. And the second-grade teacher there is a, we've got four teachers at second grade, and we've got five at the others. So as you're looking at that, there would be an increase. So in terms of new positions there, you've got three of the new positions. And then the CTE ones that are listed, those potentially could be current staff members or some creative scheduling. Then the remainder of the yellow through the orange, we would be looking at needing to adjust those to another year possibly. And again, we would have the 2023, 2024 school year to just look at those and study those. It just gives kind of a long-term projection. This is a first draft, so if there are items, feedback from this board that we don't have that, we either pass you forward, or we're not able to do that, you know, that's, we totally understand that, but we can also map that out. This is the very first we've done with this, so this is not intended to be the end-all-be-all. What I would envision is next month coming back, showing, you know, what's the financial implication to going at this. So that as we finish out the school year, we have an idea of where we're headed. As you process this, send me your thoughts in email. And next month, when I come back with this, and we'll put it in your business, we'll have some finance, financial pieces coming.
Just one thought I have now, the rest will come later on.
Yes, yes.
But one thing I think we're going to ask is to connect these priorities to our security framework as well. I'm over here kind of comparing and contrasting, making sure we have the distribution across each of the target areas for these additional positions or these areas we need here. I don't know how it all could lay out that way, but just making sure that we're not shortchanging target area three or something.
Yes.
In the effort to assess target area one.
Yep, absolutely.
Any other initial reactions at this time?
I'll say more.
Okay. It's okay.
I've got two items that are just more FYI. Tonight, we met with the district site council. Ashley did a great job facilitating that conversation. We talked about it at that meeting, provided updates on, get my, the KISA update that we've got in terms of our year one process. We'll be going to Lawrence Green Bush for a training there, where we'll, we're going to actually merge into what's called a cohort model, versus having three people on an outside dissertation team come and give their feedback and walk away. We'll be in a model that you meet with districts that are doing the same thing, and so you're learning alongside each other and getting feedback from other district KISA teams, so.
That sounds, that sounds less box checking.
It's going to, it's, absolutely.
Yeah.
Dr. Lee Hansen, she's a former teacher for our district, has grandchildren in our district. She's special education director for DeSoto, is our OBT chair, so she'll be along for the ride and guiding us from that feedback side.
Are they similar districts to us or nearby?
I will let you know on the 8th of April. It's a great question. It's a great question. Provided a brief bond update based on the presentation that we had at our last board meeting. We talked about CTE and the data that Brent shared tonight. If you haven't had a chance, check out our website. There's a new CTE page there that you can click on a pathway, and it'll take you down to the description that Brandon also talked about. And I provided a quick safety and security grant update to the group. The last item, from the BOTA side of things, Nate has reached out to the county to find out when we might be getting a list of families that we need to reach out to. And they're targeting March 1 as the date to get us that list, based on the timing of things and the volume of work load that they have. And so after that, we can then begin the process of our next step. So, that's all I have.
Okay. All right. For executive session, do we have, also have bench as well?
Yes.
Is he here? Okay, okay, great. I move, and it's personnel. I move we enter into executive session with Mr. Ray, Mr. Curry, Mr. Bland, and Mr. Dodge, for the purposes of discussing personnel, personnel matter, under the exception for non-elected personnel under coma. And the open meeting will resume out here in the library at, how much time would you like?
10 minutes.
10 minutes? Okay, let's just say 10:05.
Great.
All those in favor, please say aye. All those in favor, please say aye.
Right, which is why. I will.
Yeah, let's just have you fix it, and then we can approve it.
I am going to put it, and then I will van away my way around.
Perfect. Then there's no confusion.
No.
Thank you.
Oh, it's from that.
That's okay. So that way everybody can see the dates for themselves. Where, it was there.
Yeah.
And this couldn't, yeah, it just, yeah. And you have an order, yep, I got it. Thank you.
They'll need it.
That way you're able to lay eyes on it.
Oh, that was.
There you go. All right, so we just made, a motion for approval of the personnel report.
Second.
Okay, Kelly moved, Phil seconded to approve the personnel report, as it was just the most up-to-date corrected. All right, all those in favor, please say aye, raise your right hand. Motion carries seven zero. Phil and Susan, all those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye. Meeting adjourned 10:12. Yeah, it's not a record, but it's, yeah.